The council meeting in order. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morseup.
Here.
Forman.
Here.
Lever.
Here.
Hoggit.
Here.
Here.
Okay, so, a public informational hearing for the purpose of gathering input and addressing questions from area residents regarding the proposed integration between St. Croix EMS and Health Partners, Lakeview EMS slash Hudson Hospital, and the draft emergency medical services agreement with Lakeview Hospital. So, before we get started, there are a couple things that I just wanted to mention. Obviously, we've got a full crowd in here tonight, and that's good. We appreciate everybody being here, and we want to hear everybody that has something to say. If you could, try to keep it concise. Generally, three to five minutes. We certainly don't want you going beyond five, and depending upon how many people are wanting to speak, we may try to keep that a little closer to three. So, again, please keep it very concise. Try not to be repetitive, so that people that have something else to add to the conversation can get up and speak. We had sign-in sheets, and hopefully, I know they're going around, hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to sign in. I see some heads shaking over here, so if we can get some signage. Anybody know where the sign-in list is? We have, is it on a...
It should be on a clipboard.
It's on a clipboard? Okay, we will, we'd like to get that around to everybody, so that everybody can sign in there. We've had some requests from some of the council members, that they want to know how many of their constituents from their district are here. When you speak, if you would please come to the podium, give us your name, your address, and if you know, your district number and/or your council member. Okay? Again, so that they can keep track of the people that are from their respective districts. If you cannot make it to the mic, let us know, we will get the mic to you. Okay? Oh, yes. For those of you that are in remote locations, we've got across the hall, and downstairs in the EMS room, as well as in the fire hall, for those of you who are there and want to speak, please make your way over here, so that we can listen to what you have to say as well. And I think, what I, the last thing I think is that, I want to say here, is that what we'd like to do, because we're going to have people on both sides of the issue, some, one of the sides will likely outnumber the other side, that's just the way it works, but what we'd like to do, to make sure that everybody is heard on both sides, is to rotate. So, I'd like to take somebody first, that would be in opposition to the contract, and then somebody that is in favor of it, and go back and forth like that. So, any questions from the council? Any other suggestions? Anything I missed? No? All right. So, everybody knows what the contract is. Everybody knows, I believe, what's been going on here, and it's great to have an opportunity to get to listen to what everybody has to say, and we certainly welcome your comments, and thank you all for being here tonight, so that we can hear what you have to say. Let's start out with somebody who would be in favor of keeping SC EMS the way it currently is, and opposed to the contract. Yes, sir, come on up, and if you would, please, give us your name, address, and if you know your alderperson, that would be great.
Hello. My name is Mike Bonneman. I'm in District 5, so, John, I'm one of your constituents. I live at 726 Orange Street. I'm not very good at public speaking, so, please excuse me, I made notes, and I'm going to go through the line that way. I'm retired from St. Croix EMS. I retired last year, after 32 years of working for Hudson Ambulance. I've actually been on Hudson Ambulance longer than Lakeview has been around. I've seen a lot, I understand the system, I've seen sometimes too much. I understand that most of this is about money. Right now, my understanding is, is that we currently pay $14 per person on our taxes to support St. Croix EMS. I also understand, we pay $25 per month, or per year, per person, to support the library. That's a really disproportionate number, when you look at the difference of a life-saving measure versus a library. Makes me wonder if this isn't more an issue of priorities on the city's part, than it is of money. We need to get our priorities straight. What are we looking at here? We're looking at people's lives, more than we are, and I understand books are important, and the internet's important, and things that way, but we need to put them in perspective. I also think it's important that the city learn the difference between things that are nice to have, and things that are must-haves. It's nice to have decorative street lighting on Main Street, and decorative street lighting along Dyke Road. It's nice to have flowers hanging on Main Street, that are watered every day by city employees, in a city-owned vehicle. Those things are very nice. I like them. I like living here, and seeing those. But, a must-have is EMS. We must have control over our EMS. Simply because... If we went to a local, or, excuse me, a for-profit company to come in, if there was a problem with EMS, the citizens are stuck. There's nothing we can do. They can say, "Fine, don't use our service." That's not reality. We can't do that. If it's a city-owned service, this is what you see, right here, when there's a problem. People can come in, and ask you folks to fix it. So, we're giving up a lot, by saying, "Let it go private," rather than public. As a local taxpayer, I understand that there's going to be some increases coming up, because things do change. EMS hasn't gotten much of an increase in a long time. The $5.25 more for me, for next year, on my taxes, I'm okay with that. Everybody in my neighborhood, when I went walking, said they were okay with that. The $2 a year, for the next five years, everybody went, "Is that what this is about? That little of money?" And I had to answer, "Yes," from everything the city's posted. Now, I understand that the city's posted numbers predicting out six years from now, what medical care is going to be like. They're scary numbers. I looked at them, and, "Wow, that's scary." And I think everybody else did, too. But, the point is, is, how can we predict six years in advance, when our president doesn't know what's going to happen next year? We don't know what's going to happen with Medicare. We don't know what's going to happen with their reimbursements. We don't know what's happening with Obamacare, or the American Care Act, which are all things that pay for St. Croix EMS. It could get better. We don't know. The numbers that are put out there to scare people, I think, are just that. They're scary. I mean, how did you come up with those? I mean, does the city have a crystal ball? If they do, you know, hey, pull up the lottery numbers, would ya? We can solve all these problems. You know, it's interesting to hear that St. Croix EMS has been in the black in their budget, for every year. This is not a thing where the city's bumping tons of money into St. Croix EMS, to keep these guys alive. Their budget's been in the black. This year, they're in the, actually, they're under-budget, as of right now, and there was a predicted $90,000 shortfall this year. Nobody knew where it was coming from. I asked the chief, "Hey, chief, where's that coming from?" He says, "I don't know." Well, now, we found out. Thanks to Facebook, and people posting things, we found out the attorney's fees for the supposed sale are now being tagged to the EMS budget, to put them in the red. That's not right. It shouldn't be done that way. That should come out of the city's budget. The city's the one that's taken action on this, not St. Croix EMS. This is a community issue, and should not be taken lightly by the council. It's obvious that the community wants to keep St. Croix EMS. If you don't believe me, take a look. How many rooms do we have going? How many TV screens do we have going? There's no question of it. We've got a Facebook page that got started. The right now has over 3,800 members on that page, discussing this topic, and almost all of them are city residents. That should be extremely important to all the aldermen here, that, you know, they were voted in, all of you, as you know, to do the people's work, and to represent us, so that we don't have 300 people trying to make decisions. Well, the people are here, they're talking to you. I'm asking you, please listen. It's very, very, very important. You know, you look at, in the past, the decisions that you guys make, and how many times, in the last couple of years, that all of you have been seated, have you seen a room like this? I'll bet, none. That's how important this is to the community. And I'll finish up quick here, watching the clock. Lakeview has talked about a dynamic deployment. Like I said, I've done this 32 years. I understand dynamic deployment. It's not quite as good as you guys have been told, okay? Anybody can make anything look good. But, did you know, during the double drowning, that just happened a couple of weeks ago, I was there. I was actively working to try to save that person. And during that double drowning, our medic in charge that day, that's in charge of this, called our 911 center and said, "Hey, would you move Lakeview into Hudson's area, to cover our citizens?" The reason we asked for that was simple. Allows us to take all of our resources, and apply it to that incident. That's what we needed at that time. That's what they call dynamic deployment. The answer that we got back, from the Alina Dispatch Center, quite simply was, and I'm paraphrasing, "No. They didn't send a truck to Hudson when we asked. They said, 'We'll stage one in Stillwater. If someone in Hudson has a medical emergency, such as a heart attack or choking, they'll send it from Stillwater over here, to take care of that person.'" That's dynamic deployment. Well, in the last week, there were two calls, at least, in St. Joe Township, where Hudson Ambulance went up there, to cover 911 calls. These aren't transfers we're talking about, that are in a medical facility. These are true emergencies. Because Lakeview didn't have any trucks, either available, or there was, it was going to be a super-long wait for that person to get up there. Lakeview's saying, "We're going to provide better times?" Prove it. Simple, prove it. This is not, not the first time the city has attempted to dismantle emergency services. My father was a police officer, and he was one of the starting members of St. Croix EMS. Back in the 1980s, the city council at that time voted to eliminate the part-time police officers. They thought it was going to be a great cost-saving measure. Well, in reality, you can imagine what happened. Crime went up, overtime went up, and it took a long time for the city to finally rehire part-time police officers. It was a huge expense. It was a huge mistake, and the city council had to correct it. Now, unfortunately, this one, if you just vote to sell, is not something that can just be fixed. Once it's gone, it's gone, and we can't get it back. Thank you for your time. And Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, if I could ask, my son is here, he's special needs, and he's having a very difficult time in this crowded room. Would you allow him to come up next? He'll be very, very brief, and then he can go.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
For those of you who don't know, which most of you do, this is Brandon Myers. Brandon Myers is 19 years old, and successfully has just graduated high school, with a diploma. That was not possible, as of years ago, and if three times over, would not have been possible, if it had not been for St. Croix EMS, who successfully came to my son's rescue, within a matter of moments, and saved my son's life. If I had to wait, anything beyond the few moments that it took them to respond to my son's side, I would not have my son here today, to say hi to everybody, and to smile, and to be this happy child. For anybody who has special needs children, or adults, knows the value of minutes, knows the value of safety, and knows the value of what each and every person on our ambulance represents. I don't have 45 minutes to wait. I don't have any time, other than those few minutes, that they got to my child, three different times, so I can keep him here with us. Can you say thank you? Thank you, St. Croix EMS.
Thank you.
All right. We have someone who would like to speak in favor of the contract. Again, you know the drill.
Yes, I do know the drill. Neil Saltis, 520 Knollwood, I live in District 3. For those in the audience who don't know me, I was formerly finance officer, currently city administrator in Scandia, formerly city administrator in Osceola. I have a daughter who's been an EMT for 15 years, so I've been involved in overseeing issues related to the ambulance service for quite a few years. One of the things, we live in an ever-changing world, that forces us, as government officials, to plan and consider alternate scenarios, within an appropriate planning horizon. Relying solely on the past as an indicator for the future, is not a formula for success. What is troubling me about the current focus, it seems to be on, who owns EMS service, and how much it will cost, rather than the role of EMS as part of the community's health. Its question should be, not how a department of the city operates, but a discussion on how to best serve the health needs of this community. The city's prepared financial scenarios that indicate, that indicate the request at staffing levels will require significant additional funding when fully implemented. In considering this information, I think there needs to be recognition, that these projections are extremely conservative. And I base that based on my experience, both here and in other entities, that they don't reflect all the costs needed to equip, operate, and house an EMS service. And more importantly, do not look at the tools, equipment, and gear that will be necessary in the future, that are not provided for in the current budget estimates, to ensure that we have 30-plus EMTs that are trained to the standards of the city. As it relates to EMS, and the public safety forces in general, consider the changes in equipment and skills, that have been required over the past 10 years, and look into the future, at the skills that are going to be needed. If the only consideration is funding, the city has excess tax, property tax capacity, which leaves a question to the council, as to whether it wishes to utilize that capacity. The other communities, for which the city provides EMF services under contract, do not have that unused levy capacity, which is going to inevitably result, if the EMS stays here, of those communities having to make some very tough choices about reallocating their funds away. And we had this discussion with the library, and how bad that hurt. Or, for the residents of the city of Hudson, to carry a larger proportion of the costs. So, in your decision-making, I encourage you to look, consider some of the national trends, and likely future developments. Number one, the increasing age of the population. Percentage of the US population, 65 and older, is expected to increase 16% by 2020. Expect an increase of people with insurance through Medicare. You know, and one of the things, and note, that with the advent of the Affordable Care Act, the EMS service experienced a decrease in insured patients, but an increase in Medicare and Medicaid runs. And what that resulted to, is instead of essentially collecting near 100% on a dollar, somewhere between 19 and 29%, which makes it very hard to operate a service. The other thing is, you need to recognize, looking at big-picture trends, is the Affordable Care Act has changed the way hospitals and EMS agencies will be reimbursed in the management of chronically ill, of a chronically ill community, and as part of managing that cost. The emerging trend is for EMS agencies and hospitals to work together, or on managing patients, and the proper care setting, and addressing the number of readmissions. That's where the future is. There's going to be a shift to value-based reimbursement for services, not services provided. That model is changing under the Affordable Care Act, and I don't see anything else that's going to change that. So, in the future, what you're looking at is an aging population, an increase in the number of people covered by Medicare or Medicaid, increased call volumes, because it's easier to access for those people. So, there's going to be greater stress put upon the service. It's also likely that Medicare/Medicaid cuts will be provided, if you continue to deliver services on the traditional method. The Affordable Care Act created financial incentives for patient-centered, forcing hospitals to focus on all the links in the healthcare system. Reimbessments in the future are going to be tied to the quality of work, and patient outcomes, not upon people opening up the doors and getting service. This is also going to open the doors for alternate reimbursements for non-traditional services, and alternate care mechanisms. Getting close to the end. Absent planning for changes will be faced, you know, absent, let's put it this way. The hospital's been planning, probably, for years, on how to deal with these changes. They know it's coming. I doubt you see the same level of interest in the hospital talking about the EMS service, because what they're looking to do, is how do we integrate this into our system, to number one, they're, obviously, they're looking for reimbursement, but the model's changing. The world's changing. They're looking to deliver better services to their patients, and to the community. In summary, I see this focus on staffing and numbers, when I see that focus on staffing numbers, I think it's safe to conclude that the city hasn't properly engaged itself, in the best way of how do we address the future health needs of this community. In my mind, the lack of this conversation, on the needs of health commitment for the service, for the community, it's a good indicator, that it's not a priority to this council. And as such, I'm recommending, or I'm supporting, going with the contract for Lakeview Healthcare, because they're engaged in this conversation. They're looking down the line, how are we going to deliver services, the best services, to this community in the future? And, you know, this, you know, all we're talking about here, is dollars and people. Service to the community is what EMS should be about. Thank you.
Appreciate that. One thing I would like to comment, please, let's try to keep the applause down, so that we can get, keep the flow of the conversation moving, if possible. I would appreciate that. Next, another speaker that would be opposing the contract. Again, please, name, address, and if you know your council member, alderperson.
Yes, I do. My name is Emily Smith, and I am constituent in District 2, who, which Bill Alms would be my representative, and I live at 40 Stone Harbor Place.
Thank you.
Now, as I speak today, I respectfully ask that you do not interrupt me when I'm speaking. If you have questions or comments, you may elect to speak to me after I have spoken. I have given the issue of selling St. Croix EMS much thought, and I strongly believe it is important for you to understand what I, as a lifelong Hudson resident and taxpayer, view as being beneficial to the Hudson community. After much thought, and I mean a lot of thought, I have decided that I strongly oppose the sale of St. Croix EMS. I have lived in Hudson my entire life. I grew up in Hudson, lived at my mother and father's home while I studied at the University of Wisconsin River Falls, and eventually, my husband and I brought our own home, or bought our own home here, because of my deep love for Hudson. This love stems from the years I have experienced the strong sense of community in Hudson, and the care and respect residents show to each other. It is because of that strong community that exists in Hudson, I believe strongly, that community-based care, in regards to being cared for by a community entity, is much, a much better care model. St. Croix EMS has always provided wonderful, community-based care. I have witnessed members of St. Croix EMS go to great lengths to show respect, kindness, and care, that wouldn't be seen with care provided by a big healthcare system. It isn't difficult to understand why community care in Hudson is so easy to identify. It is because the paramedics and EMTs that help us when we have an emergency are our neighbors, and people just like me, who love and care about our community. I want to be cared for, by those that live in my community, in an emergency situation. I remember multiple times that St. Croix EMS worked to find home for pets, who had to be given up by ill owners. I remember them helping the fire department find children who were missing. That means searching out in fields for kids, whose parents can't find them. I remember them taking care of an extremely mentally ill man, that lived in my childhood neighbor. And every time they cared for him, they showed him respect, compare, or care and compassion that I have never witnessed before. It was amazing how well they would treat him. Then, I decided that I needed to research a little bit about the financials. And, what I discovered is that St. Croix EMS is in desperate need of a budget increase, and staff is in need of a raise. St. Croix EMS would also strongly benefit from the hiring of some full and part-time EMTs. And, as the city continues to grow, it is also imperative that it be considered that St. Croix EMS may need to move from its downtown location, to that up the hill, possibly, or it may need to staff an additional office up on the hill. I would like to say, that I am a fiscal conservative. It was hard to meet, for me to come to this decision, but I support raising our taxes to fund St. Croix EMS.
Jim, please keep the applause down.
After looking at the budget, it also became very clear to me, that we have an extremely overfunded library. We could maybe cut the budget for that a little bit, and we might not have to raise taxes so much, to save St. Croix EMS. So, given that, I also would like to say, that if you make the decision to go ahead with this contract, I expect a tax cut. Thank you.
I said, "Please, please keep applause down." Who would like to speak next in favor of the contract? Can you get up, okay?
I'm just going to turn this a little bit, so I'm not speaking with my back to everybody who's here. First of all, my name is Raynab. I live at 521 Trillium Lane. I live in the town of Troy, and I am the town of Troy's representative on the EMS commission, for the municipalities that are served. Just so you know, I have a long history on the commission. I've served on it for probably nine of the last 15 years, that I've been involved with the town. I just want you to know that during the last year, the commission has been helping to determine, what is the best course of action, as we need to change the organizational structure of Hudson's EMS service. And I say that we need to change that structure, because if you look at what the EMS director, and what Health Partners are both proposing, they're both proposing a system that's much different than what we have now. It's not volunteer-based, it's based on full-time employees manning two ALS ambulances on a 24/7 basis. So, if we're here talking about, let's say, what we have now, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, what do we do for the future? Okay. So, I just want to quickly review the staffing model that we have right now with St. Croix EMS. And when you paraphrase things, it always sounds very simplistic. So, I know when I paraphrase, that people are going to say, "Well, you've missed this, or missed that." The Hudson service presently has five full-time paramedics, one full-time EMT, and one full-time support person. One of the full-time paramedics also serves as the EMS director. The full-time staff is aided by four casual paramedics and 27 EMTs. The full-time staff is aided by four casual paramedics and 27 EMTs. A typical EMS shift is staffed by two paramedics and three EMTs. These individuals can choose to, but do not have to be at the station when on call. They often respond from their homes when on call, and the service uses what is called a tiered response system. When a call comes in, a paramedic is immediately dispatched in a chase vehicle. This is later followed by an ambulance, most often staffed by two EMTs. Now, I say this, and it sounds like I'm very critical of the service. We have a wonderful EMS service. The people do a great job. So I'm not critical, I'm just saying that's where we are today. Now, the city council has two proposals in front of them. One is from the EMS director. And basically, within five years, Brandon has projected, excuse me, I got a little tired here. Brandon has projected that we'll need to add five additional full-time paramedics. In addition, there will be 18 part-time EMTs who would have guaranteed hours under a new pay structure. Under his proposal, these individuals will be staffed at a new five-bay EMS center at Ward Avenue. Two ambulances would be staffed 24/7, and the staff would be required to be at the station. Brandon has created a model for this plan, and the financial contribution required will base, basically, based on his model, the financial contribution required from the municipalities will have to more than double. This is our new direction for a municipal-funded service because everyone agrees the present service is not sustainable as it's done today. What is the proposal, too, from Health Partners? Health Partner is offering a 10-year contract, and I hope everybody's taken the time to read it. We're all here today, so I assume that most of us have gone through and looked at that document. An ambulance base, an ambulance base for at least two ambulances and a four-bed resting area will be built on the Hudson Hospital campus. At least two ALS ambulances will be based in Hudson. Each ambulance will be staffed with two paramedics to respond to calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week. One quick-response vehicle equipped with ALS equipment will also be based in Hudson for crew support or first response. So what we have in front of us tonight are two proposals that significantly alter the structure of our existing service. Both are built around full-time employees staffing two 24/7 ambulances. Now, on a personal note, as a commission member, I have been troubled by public comments that I hear that insinuate that commission members are not concerned about existing employees or the quality of service that we have. I'll just say, nothing could be further from the truth. All of the commission members live in the service district and need good EMS service. So no matter which side of the fence you're on here, we're all here because we want good EMS service. I guarantee you that. As a 67-year-old man with a fairly serious health concern, I would not support a lesser service than we have now. I mean, I'm their target market, right? Second, everyone on the EMS Commission thinks the EMS staff does a good job, and we thank them for their service. And I mean that truthfully. We thank everyone for their service. We don't want to hurt anyone on the staff, but change will affect some if it occurs. So I want to highlight some of the things that are in the contract that's been proposed by Health Partners. It says, "Health Partners will extend an offer of employment, including salary and benefits, to the current St. Croix EMS director and the current administrative assistant, and at least four current full-time St. Croix EMS paramedics employed by the city." Hudson Hospital will also extend an offer of employment to the current four St. Croix EMS EMTs who work the most 12-hour shifts for St. Croix EMS. The full-time EMTs must participate in a training program, which will include tuition and reimbursement for the purpose of advancing to the paramedic level. So not only are they going to take all of the existing full-time staff if this changes, they're going to take on four additional EMTs which are not full-time and do, with the city, tuition reimbursement to bring them up to this higher level. Deliberations and the rumor mill have gone on for too long. This, in my opinion, was never about saving the service as we know it today. It has been about where we move in the future. Do we want a full-time service that's managed and financed by the municipalities? Or do we want to partner with a local healthcare organization? Both are reasonable options. One's more costly than the other. That is the real question in front of the council tonight. Now, in closing, I want to personally thank Tom McCormick because I've been in a lot of meetings with him, and he's taken a lot of flak on this issue. And, believe me, he tries to serve the community, and if you think he's not in support of the EMS service, you're absolutely wrong. He's there trying to do what he thinks is right. We might all have different opinions, but we're all trying to do what we think is right. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Again, please. Thank you, Ray. All right, do we have another speaker that would be in opposition? Yes, sir. Thanks.
My name is Cy Houston. I live at 616 Grand U Drive. I'm in Jim Weber's district. First, I want to thank you for having the chance to address this issue. That's encouraging. I'm discouraged by the fact that it's taken so long to get to this point. You folks are considering a contract tonight, when we could have had a public discussion on this some time ago. And I think we could have probably dealt with some of the issues in that contract, which I'm going to speak to in a minute. This, I agree actually with the two gentlemen that opposed this. We need to look to the future, and this is not just about money. This is about service to people. Our current situation, as I understand it, we have two units covering 50 square miles. LVS has three units covering 300 square miles. Why in the world would they want to buy our program? The numbers seem very simple. It improves their ability to deliver service. What does it do for, the former speaker mentioned a partnership. If you look at that contract, there's no partnership here at all. This is more of a jack-in-the-bean stock, and we're trading a cow for magic beans. I'm concerned about the adequacy of LVS services. The drowning, they're called, "Sorry, we can't come." That's inexcusable. It's unacceptable. This is a control issue. Right now, you have control over the EMS program. By this contract, you give up all control. There's one little place in there where you may have some influence, but you give up all control. EMS currently represents about 1.8% of your general operating budget. And the gentleman said $16 a person, and I suspect everybody in here is willing to throw in more money to support this thing. I don't know that your financial considerations has taken into account future revenue. If you've looked at Carmichael Ridge, you're not going to buy anything up there for less than $350,000, which I'm going to bet generates over $4,000 a year in real estate taxes. And there are a couple hundred homes going in. That's a huge amount of additional revenue coming up in the future. So yeah, we need to look to the future, but we need to look at also all of our anticipated revenue for that. We also need to look at what the costs are for the user, and the user being the person who's transported by EMS. And granted, the new healthcare situation has changed a lot of things, but my understanding is the LVS costs are almost a double what the local costs are. And that needs to be a consideration for our local citizenry. And I'm also curious, I was at the last meeting where you discussed the issue where the St. Croix County Emergency Medical Service, they put $8 million into a new communication system, but LVS says they don't want to use that? That, I don't understand that at all. So, but let me look at the contract. First of all, you're going to sign a 10-year contract. A 10-year contract, not five, but a 10-year contract with automatic three-year renewals. And there's no review or decision process without extensive involvement of a commission or committee, I believe it's called. LVS can revise the service if North Hudson decides to decline or pull out of this at some time. They can revise the service. That little catchphrase says, "I can cut off the number of people that are in Hudson, and I can cut the number of vehicles, and you can't do anything about it." There's a non-compete clause in that contract. I cannot believe this. You cannot plan anything. You cannot involve any third party. You cannot directly or indirectly plan, organize, engage in, to provide any EMS service with anybody, from anywhere, at any time, or you are, you've actually committed a material breach of the contract. I can't, it just amazes me that, I don't know who wrote this, but he certainly wrote it for the LVS folks. There's a review committee set up in there so that we can deal with issues. The review committee sets it up, so Hudson has one member, LVS has a member, and then any other municipality has a member. So that's North Hudson and a portion of the town of Troy and a portion of the town of Warren. Five members on the review commission, and you've got one. There is no control on that. You have no opportunity to make any dramatic change if you see a decline in service. And what can the commission, the committee do? The review committee can monitor, review, and recommend. They're going to meet in the first three years, every three months. After that, they're going to meet twice a year. You can call a meeting if you like. They can have data, but they can't have trade-secret information. What is that? It's defined by LVS. They're the ones that tell you what the trade-secret information is that they're not going to share with you. And then you can recommend a remediation plan, which you have to give to LVS. They have to consider it. It has to be presented to all the municipalities. Do you hear the clock ticking here? This would take months in order for you to deal with something. Finally, the reasons for non-renewal or termination of a contract. How do you get out of this thing? Because LVS says they will make, quote, "their best effort to maintain, on average, response times according to the 9/11 EMS requests." Their best efforts, on average. There are so, there's so much wiggle room in that, I can't believe it. As a former administrator, this, there are so many red flags in this contract that I urge you to have more public discussion on this so that you know what's going to happen. LVS is also the one that decides, should we send a second ambulance to the scene or not? They're going to give you coverage for football games, because it's required under Wisconsin state law, and other events. And in the end, termination of this can happen for the breach of any material term of this agreement. Breach of any material term. Material term is lawyer language. That means you've got to have something very significant in order to get out of this thing. Once we trade this cow for the beans, we're stuck with the beans. And these beans are not magic. Last point, LVS, if you look at that contract, repeatedly retains the authority to make all operational decisions. If you sign this contract, you totally divorce yourself from any control or involvement with EMS. It's totally up to LVS. Whatever happens in the future will be up to them. You'll have nothing to do with it.
Thank you, Cy. Speaker in favor of the contract? Speaker in favor of the contract?
My name is Lori Bernard, 1509 Laurel Avenue. I live in District Three. As a former council member, I spent about five years on the EMS Commission prior to Councilperson McCormick. I don't think we're here to discuss who cares the most about EMS services. We all care about EMS. We all care significantly about our police, our fire, and our EMS. Your job as a council is to determine how to deliver the services. The reality is that our current service, as it is set up, does not appear to be sustainable from a personnel or financial standpoint. Having sat on the EMS Commission for five years, I can attest firsthand that the current operation has been and continues to be an extraordinary scheduling challenge. When you have an EMS chief working upwards of 4,000 hours, you do the math, 80 hours a week on average. It's not sustainable. We're now on our third EMS chief in the last five years. I can tell you that the previous two chiefs were similarly overworked. The system is simply not optimized regarding how hours are spread across the approximately 30-plus EMTs. The way our system currently operates is not sustainable and has resulted in far too much turnover in our leadership. An overworked EMS chief ought to be a concern to all of us with regard to that individual's well-being, as well as a potential liability to our city. Many of us have studied the numbers and the reality of the shortfalls that will be realized in the coming years. It's due to a variety of factors, but the reality is that the current EMS model is not sustainable from a financial perspective. Borrowing for ongoing operating expenses is a non-starter. Some have suggested going to referendum. But the plausibility of going to referendum year after year to tax beyond the tax levy limit is not feasible. In addition, these shortfalls will be realized not only by the city, but by our partners. So they, too, need to come up with creative ways to address the shortfalls. If the numbers are scary, it doesn't mean they aren't real. We regularly ask our city financial officer to make these projections for this very reason so we can be proactive and not reactive. These are realities that the council can choose to address or can kick down the road for future councils. But the bottom line is that to do nothing would be negligent. If this contract has been negotiated, if this contract that has been negotiated is not perfect, then let's work to get it right. Maybe a hybrid of St. Croix EMS and Lakeview Services could be forged, but find a solution. Status quo is not good enough going forward. It is my hope that emotions can settle down. Mayor O'Connor and Alderman McCormick were directed unanimously by this council to negotiate with a hospital. They did so with no malice or evil intent, yet both have been vilified for simply doing what they were tasked with doing by some in the public and some on this council. Sadly, why, it is why many good people won't run for local office. The relationship between St. Croix EMS and Lakeview is one that we need to foster and not destroy through harsh words and heated rhetoric. We are looking to you, council, to lead the way. So come up with a solution that delivers quality service in an affordable, sustainable manner. Status quo is no longer an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Speaker in opposition to the contract?
My name's Bill Campbell. I live with my wife Susan Story at 1725 Laurel. We're in Jim Weber's district, and we are opposed to this deal. Susan and I have lived in the country for most of our adult lives and enjoyed it very much till we got a little too elderly to do the yard work and were worried about a variety of issues, including healthcare. And so we moved to Hudson. And we live here very happily, and we pay much higher taxes very happily because we get very good services here, including the EMS. I think selling the EMS service and giving up complete local control is a terrible mistake. If the system is unsustainable, let's fix it. I have nothing against Health Partners. I'm a Health Partners customer, but I also seek medical services elsewhere when I need it, which is occasionally. If we, if we trade our EMS to, to Health Partners for a pocketful of beans, we have no control whatsoever. We have no choice in altering services or whatever. So as I say, I'm opposed to this contract. I'm also deeply offended by the way this was done. Rumor has it that this is going to save the city a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. That's nice, except I don't think that savings is going to last. Since Health Partners has complete control over the services provided, I think that they're going to nibble away at, at what we have to pay, or at our savings, and they're also going to reduce services, and we're going to have nothing to say about it. I think the way that this contract was, was negotiated in the dark is unconscionable. So I urge you all to vote against it. Thank you.
All right, do we have another speaker in favor of the contract? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Diane Yocum, and although I live in New Richmond, Wisconsin, I have a business in Hudson for the last 26 years. And so to that, I'm speaking to the council. And I have listened and watched and read both sides of the proposal. I have read the contract. I have heard the emotional rants. I have heard the logic. I had heard accusations and a lot of demonizing of people. And like Lori, I think that the council here has a huge job to do. And one of the things that has come to my realization in the last probably year or two is that the spending in, not only in the community, but also in the county has increased. And I am extremely loyal to small business, small community. I live in a small town. I came from a small town. And the bottom line, I'm committed to small business versus big government. In the past few months, I've become increasingly concerned about it as a taxpayer. And when looking at the big picture, I foresee my tax bill rising far beyond my budget, both my personal and my business. The projected budget for the EMS is not sustainable, point blank. You add that in, and some people say, well, I can afford $5. I can afford $16, you know, for my taxes. But that's not it. That is just a small portion of what's gonna happen in this community and in this county. You look at the nursing home with a $2 million deficit. You look at the proposed 400-plus parking ramp in downtown Hudson. Where's that money gonna come from? You look at the proposed public transportation. Who knows how, how that's going to be funded? You looked at the proposed TIF financing for the new dog track development. That means that money is not gonna be coming in as it has been in the past. You look at the proposed bike trail to Nowhere that on the skinny side is $33 million, but actually has grown to another $71 million expenses. You look at the proposed new county shop in Hammond, initial estimate at $20 million. Oh, and yes, then there's the overruns on the budget for the bridge that will fall on taxpayers. And don't forget, there's the living wage and sanctuary cities. To me, the spending spigot is open, wide open. Let's turn it off, and like Lori said, be creative. Get together with Lakeview. Cut some of the items that need to be cut from the budget. Balance it so that it's all sustainable, so that we as taxpayers aren't footing the whole bill for everything. I know that the city and county together need to look at everything because there's a big noose around our financial pocketbook. And I ask that you look at it and try and cut the spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker in opposition to the contract?
Marian Weber, 604 Grand Drew Drive, and...
You're a council member.
Ah, geez, I can't remember. Jim Weber. I wanted, just some, a couple of things that have been said. A lot of things were just said about county budget, and there was money, dollars mentioned that I happen to know a little bit about. The Sangkara Crossing Bridge is totally paid for by Minnesota. Every aspect of it is paid for by Minnesota. The several million dollars for bike lanes that go no place, that's, that's just a number that some people like to drag out of the air. It's just a totally fraudulent number, totally untrue. I heard a reference to Obamacare or whatever the, they're calling the healthcare program that we have now, which we, and choices being made based on what that program's gonna be providing or not providing in the future. Who knows what that's going to look like in the future? So I sort of resent that that number's being used as a factual piece of information. I've been very troubled all the way through this process because I am a partner to an alderperson, and I know that the aldermen and women in the group have been very confused and frustrated with the lack of information they had to be able to come forth and make good decisions. It's only been lately that they've had access to accurate information. And thank you for providing that. It's very important, and that should have been up there, out in the front. I also know that alderpeople have been getting scripted phone calls asking them to vote for the EMS service being funded through the contract. And I don't, I don't like that. No one else has been going around campaigning for one way or the other. My experience with our alderpeople is that they've been listening to what the folks had to say in Hudson and taking that into consideration, reviewing the information that they do get studiously, and, and being in a position to make the best possible decision. Also, all this money that people are talking about as far as the going forward with the EMS being kept under the control of Hudson, there are three plans out there that are graduated and gradually work into a end result at, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact date that this, this will be completed. I think maybe three years, maybe five years. But it's a gradual program that over time would bring the EMS into a fully functioning, five years from now, service. Personally, I think that, from the get-go, my gut says, why are we doing this, and why does Lakeville want this? If we go into this program and anything goes wrong, we're stuck with it. There are towns around us who have opinions and have voiced opinions. If this goes south with, with Lakeville, they can pull out and go to River Falls. River Falls, River Falls has been battling forever, because I'm from River Falls, and I've served in River Falls. To, between Hudson and River Falls for the services, there's been a competition for a long time about who has that service. So if it goes south, River Falls, Troy can pull out and go with River Falls. I, I really have a lot of issues about how this was done. I don't think it's ethical, to be quite frank. I think having private meetings and to present my opinion, not my opinion, I'm not having private meetings, to constituents, it doesn't smell right to me. I don't like that. I think there have been opportunities to be at open meetings, and the choice has been made to go to a private presentation, after which the alderpeople started getting phone calls, so, thank you.
All right, another speaker in favor of the contract?
Honorable mayor, councilman, councilwomen. Thank you for putting this on and letting us speak today. It doesn't like me. My name is Paul Burning, and if you're privy to Facebook at all recently, you probably know where I live. If you don't, it is 1806 Trillium Way in Hudson, Wisconsin, the city of. My wife and I love the city of Hudson. We moved here five years ago. We specifically moved here because of the nurturing atmosphere and the great care that this city takes care of itself. The community, the schools in particular, is one big reason why we moved here. We moved, we also have a special place in our heart for this city because this is exactly the place where my wife and I met and fell in love 19 years ago, working together at McDonald's in our first job in high school. So we have some things that have come up, and I want to address. First and foremost, I'd like to talk about private presentations. The mayor was invited to my house. Yes, it was a private presentation. It was a private presentation in my home, and last I checked, we still have the First Amendment. So I'll address it with that. The other thing is, we have an ever-increasing spread of Medicare/Medicaid reimbursements and devastating effects that the Affordable Care Act has had on our healthcare system. With that being said, the future of Sangkara EMS has been put in jeopardy as a municipally-run organization. Adding to that fact, we have a lot of people coming up here today and are gonna voice their opinions one way or another. But I think we all can agree that because of bureaucracy, the problems that have gone on and on in Sangkara EMS as far as an organizational standpoint, not from an employee standpoint, is, is one of the main reasons why we're at this point at looking with integrating with Lakeview. After looking at all the data, checking on sources, having conversations with people from Lakeview Hospital, Washington County, the city administrator of Hudson, getting information from the Hudson Finance Director, or the city finance director, and Sangkara EMS themselves, I've made a conclusion that I am endorsing the integration with Lakeview because if it does not happen now, we will be seriously facing a financial crisis for this city and those municipalities surrounding us to be able to operate as a city. What good is a great EMS service if there aren't citizens here to partake in that service? Or taxpayers around to be able to put tax money away to have that service in place? In all seriousness, I have a wife and four children, and it's not easy providing for them day in and day out. You see the cost of food, medical care, housing, and all of that is affected by the mill rates and the levy limits that are set in this city. So some of you have seen these numbers as councilmen and women and chosen not to believe them. And not because, you know, because the deficits are so big or the response times are so horrible, but because you've chosen not to do so. The deficits at Sangkara EMS, being run as a municipal organization, are overtaking, will overtake the city's ability to function, and it makes perfect sense to have the hospital run this service. Why? Because in the private sector, it is a lost leader that complements their service perfectly. You've seen Google acquire companies all the time that standing alone would not make sense in, in the private sector. But by acquiring that company, they're able to add that to their services. A very large card processor, Fortune 100 company just acquired a company that for the last three years had been running 100-plus million-dollar deficits. Was this an acquisition for revenue and profits? No, it was an acquisition for process and to supplement a current need that they had to deliver a quality product to their clients. I'm gonna wrap this up quick because we got a lot of people to go. But in the end, I would ask all you council members to consider the integration with Lakeview carefully, knowing that that could be a means to alleviate pressure for our city's growth potential and the means to deliver services to our community. One last thing, the, with the, all the backroom, smoke and mirrors, accusations that are being levied against our mayor and, and Mr. McCormick, our city councilman, it is sad to see that those are being placed out there because these guys work hard every day. Every day to deliver what they feel is a quality, quality city to you, for you to live in. And all of our city councilmen, I believe, do that day in and day out. So I'm going to leave that with that. And, oh, one last thing, Mike, just so you know, in dynamic deployment, Lakeview would have automatically moved an ambulance to Hudson had they been integrated with Hudson already. That's part of dynamic deployment, so, thank you. And I'll shake your hand after, buddy.
All right, next speaker in opposition to the contract?
Name is Angela Felreth, 807 Green Street. I am in District 1. Randy is my alderman. I've heard a lot of facts, figures, a lot of probables, a lot of maybes, a lot of what-ifs. Here is what I know. There is an overwhelming number of people in Hudson that are against this. They don't want this. Everyone I have spoken to are willing to pay higher taxes for this service. They do not want to give up control. I work in animal rescue, which I know sounds like it has nothing to do with this, but I can't help but think, every time I get one of those calls where I've got this great dog, but I just don't have time to deal with it. You know, I don't have time to fix it. I kind of feel like that's what the Hudson City Council or what the mayor and whoever else is backing him on this sale is doing. They're taking something that Hudson should have, something that is a wonderful service, and they're going, mm, I don't really have the time to deal with it or fix it, and they're sending it to the pound. They're giving away complete control. I'm not okay with this, and I'll tell the aldermen what they want to hear. I, and everyone I have talked to, I am willing to pay the extra taxes to keep control of our EMS. Does it need to be fixed here and there? Maybe. I'm willing to pay for that, and so is everyone that I have talked to. Short and sweet.
Thank you. In favor of the contract? Is there another speaker in favor of the contract?
Hi there, my name is Diane Keel. I'm at 1344 Carriage Drive, Hudson, under Jim Weber. And I sure didn't know what to do when I heard about this situation. I'm totally in the belief that if it's not broke, don't fix it. And everybody was, seemed like they were up in arms. So I put together a meeting. I talked to the seniors, and they said I could use the senior center, and I could invite anybody and everybody that had a part or had something to do with the EMS. But you guys didn't show up. I mean, it was on the website that says, "Save our EMS." I know Tom was there, Rich was there, Lakeview was there, Brad, Hudson EMS was there, and they were there to answer questions. I didn't know what the answers were. I didn't know it was good, I didn't know it was bad. I just wanted to know what was good for Hudson. And I'm not from here. I moved here from Pennsylvania, came from Chicago. So I'm not one that, you know, knows everybody. My daughter loves it here as far as that part goes. But when I was doing the research, and I listened very carefully on what was being said when we had this meeting, which I was hoping everybody would come so questions could be answered. It's hard to see when people say, this is a lie, that's a lie, that's not truthful. And I guess 45 years of service, it sounds like the EMS have done an absolutely wonderful job for 45 years. It's just been absolutely fantastic. So, you know, doing a little bit more research, yeah, it looks like in the future, 1 million to 1.3 million could be saved. I do like the idea of the paramedics. I love the idea that two ambulances will be sitting over there at Hudson Hospital. GPS service, that sure sounds good as far as knowing where all the ambulances are for, what is it, North St. Paul, Lakeview, Hudson. And that's a good thing. And we no longer would have buildings, salaries, maintenance on the buildings, maintenance on vehicles. All that would go away. Building people would go away. And one happened to mention the fact that, old people like me, if you get the call, what are they paying? Medicare, 19% of what the bill is? That really stinks. That really is gonna put us in the hole if a bunch of his old bags start calling up and, you know, guys, this is not good. But one thing I did like, I volunteer two days a week. I do the Department of Aging, and there's a lot of people that have issues. I never realized how many people fell down or fell out of bed. If you watch TV, help, I fall, I can't get up. Well, I guess that happens more than we realize or think. And so that was brought up, and we kind of asked. And what's good with Lakeview is if they come to your house, and I said, well, people like me, call me, I can go pick somebody up. And they said, no. If somebody falls, we have to know, have they had a stroke? Did their hip break and they fell? What's the reason they fell? And I thought, ah, I guess so. I'll stay out of that one then. And with this, only if you're transported would Lakeview charge them. Now, keeping in mind, we're totally out of the billing process. We don't deal with insurance companies. We don't deal with maintenance. We don't deal with ambulance and all that kind of good stuff. With Hudson right now, and they have to, just because we need the money. Brad said that, yes, if we come pick you up, it's 200 bucks. And I don't know how you can make it if they didn't charge that. But thank goodness, with Lakeview, what they want to do is they charge you on people that are transported, that something is wrong, something is... is wrong, something is bad, something is broken. And so that's kind of a good thing. I was thrilled to hear that the top EMSs, the top people, I didn't realize it was six, I thought it was four, would still have jobs, and I love the idea. I don't know that that many, but I sure know enough to bring cookies over to the ambulance and the fire and the police and all that, because I so appreciate everything they do for Hudson here. And like I said, I'm probably the dumbest one up here speaking, but I sure try, and I put the meeting together because I needed some answers. So me personally, I almost have to say I have to vote in favor, just because I think it's just a win-win situation for Hudson and North Hudson and that. And I did do my research, and I, it would have been wonderful if more of you had come to the meeting, because they really weren't hiding anything. They just wanted to answer your questions. Communications has been answered. Jim Weber had mentioned that that was an issue, and I think it's Steve Tuskett who they've kind of gotten rid of all the issues and problems there. And yeah, there were problems. I'm sure there's still stuff coming up. I know on the contract, it's like an eight-minute, and if they don't follow the contract, yeah, we can get rid of them, but Lakeview's been around for a long time. I really have to say, I think they'll do a great job, so I really hope that you will vote that the new program comes in and we could use our money for, I don't know, I'd sure like a parking ramp, because I'm getting tired of dropped off because I can't walk that far anymore, but thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Diane. Speaker in opposition to the contract? It's you next, Ron.
Thank you for giving me the time to address you and you folks as well. My name is Tim Condon. I live at 548 Tolgren Street over in Troy Township, so I'm not directly in the city, but I am absolutely directly impacted by what goes on. There's been a lot of talk already about, you know, things like, we can talk about all kinds of stuff, response times and service models, and what's going on, and what they're doing, what they're going to do. One of my biggest questions is, as this draft contract that was just published on the city website shows up, there's a lot of holes, as one of the previous speakers had mentioned as well. One that's stuck out at me, as a fair disclaimer, I'm speaking completely on my own behalf, not on behalf of anyone else or any department, but I have been a member of the Hudson Fire Department for 15 years. One of the lines, not necessary, but thank you, one of the lines in that contract, we're talking about EMS, or standbys for fire calls, fire standbys, and they specifically mention in the contract that that's not going to be a dedicated truck, meaning that if they're there for a fire standby, which of course they'll address, they'll go when they're called, but if another call comes in, that truck can take off on them. Now, within the fire service, 50% of the firefighters that die in the line of duty die from heart attacks related to the duties that they're doing. We need that truck there. Currently, St. Croix EMS provides that truck, and that truck doesn't leave until the fire chief says, "We don't need you anymore." This is something that, for the rest of the public safety community, whether it's a fire standby or police for a SWAT or a dangerous warrant or anything like that, we need to address some of these things in the contract. So maybe this program goes whichever direction it goes, but we need to put the brakes on for a little bit. This thing has been out here for a couple days since it got put on the website for people to look at. We need to look at this a little bit more. Things like this are, that are completely avoidable, as was addressed at a recent city council meeting, is opening a lot of cans up for liability. And that's something that I don't think we want to, not only the liability of if someone gets sued because decisions were made that didn't have to be made, and all the personal injury lawyers in town are, "Ooh, yeah." But seriously, this is the kind of stuff that we need to put the brakes on. Take a look at this contract and figure out what's going on. Maybe we end up going this direction, maybe we don't. Looking at the, it sounds like all of the communications questions have been resolved, which I'm not completely aware of those resolutions, but that's another thing that's stuck out at me. That's not even mentioned in the contract, how they're going to work with the county. But quite frankly, looking back to even the 9/11 Commission, the study was done after the towers fell on 9/11. One of the key contributing factors, bless you, to those 343 firefighters, people just like me, going to work that day, not knowing what they're walking into, not going home to their family the next day, was a lack of interoperability. Different departments weren't able to talk to each other, and that was a major contributing factor. NIOSH reports, firefighter line of duty tests, contributing factors, a lot of times communication problems. This is stuff that needs to be resolved. All of our departments need to be able to talk to each other. And then, one other thing I want to throw out there, and I'll pass it on to everyone else. You hear, we've heard a lot of talk about, I don't want to call it accusations, but comments, I guess, talking about emotional speak. I'll own that. I absolutely will own that. I work in a very, I work for a career fire department over in the Twin Cities, is my regular job, in a similar situation where the paramedic ambulances use the dynamic deployment type strategies. And I can't tell you the number of times, as a first responder, I've been showing up, "We've got CPR in progress and a full arrest," comes across on our radio, "Yeah, the paramedics are coming from four cities away," when I know for a fact that there's an adequate mutual aid ambulance in the next community over. But they, they own that area, they're sending their trucks first. So is it emotional for me? Absolutely. When I sit and watch someone, their stroke symptoms degrading right before my very eyes, and while I'm waiting for an ambulance to come and help them, it's unacceptable. We need to think about some of this stuff before we just jump in with four days of scrutiny on the contract, so. Regardless of where, I've actually reached out to several of you, I know, offered, I've worked at literally every, every type of EMS providing model there is. I've been, like I said, here in the department, I've worked for St. Croix EMS for a while, in a full-time career fire department. I've worked for numerous ground ambulance providers in the cities. I've got a lot of background in this stuff. I'd love to sit and work with you guys and talk through some of this stuff. Take a look at the, hey, you know what? We should probably think about this before we jump in. Hey, have we thought about looking at this? No one's really taken me up on that offer, but that's all right. But in the meantime, like I said, we just absolutely need to really, really think this thing through and not just jump on the best presentation that a guy in a suit came and threw in front of us. So, thank you very much.
Do we have a speaker in favor of the contract? Any other speakers in favor of the contract? Yes, sir.
Council, mayor, first of all, thanks for holding the meeting. My name is Dick Pearson, 1109 Crestview Drive, Hudson. Been a resident here for over 30 years, seen a lot of changes. I have recently been involved with this EMS thing here and don't have all the answers. I commend the people on both sides that came up with the information that they have. They put a lot of time into it. I admire and commend all sides. My focus would be, not today, not tomorrow, looking ahead five years from now, 10 years, like the one gentleman, Mr. Burning, I think, brought up. And that's basically where I'm coming from, is, as we know, we live in a world that's changing daily, and what's going to happen in the next five, 10 years? As I recall, when I first, when we first moved here, Hudson Hospital was just a small hospital up on a hill up there, and I think they had the foresight at that time to want to expand it. So ultimately, they acquired, purchased some land out here in the city and wanted to build a new facility. And obviously, they did not at that time have the wherewithal to do that. So what did they need? They had to partner with somebody. Who did they partner with? They partnered with a big health company. To my knowledge, it's worked out pretty well. So looking ahead, in the next five, 10 years, because I've heard here tonight, and by the way, I've learned on both sides, thank you, but looking down the road is what I'm concerned about. Obviously, we're, I, people are, we all know taxes here in Hudson are very, very high. That's a given. You've got the school district, you've got the county, and a number of other issues. I think one lady mentioned that the nursing home out there in Richmond is in debt for a million or $2 million, whatever. So what I, my concern, again, to get back to the taxation thing, is there a possibility that you, 10 years, I understand it, to renegotiate it? I don't know. Again, I come back, my focus is on people that are trying to stay in their homes right now. My taxes 30 years ago, I think, were about $1,200, $1,300. Today, they're well over $8,000 a year. Now, I would like to see, you know, instead of the bad-mouthing people here and calling names and things like that, there's no question that the service provided by the EMS is professional service. But again, looking down the road, what's going to happen in the next five years or so, I think we all have to very seriously take a look at that and take a hard look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. In opposition? Okay.
My name is Joan Schneider, and I'm a recent resident of Hudson, and I believe I'm in District Three. I vote at the United Methodist Church. I was born here, I was raised here, and I'll probably die here, and I am going to be buried here. And my family has had a long history of community service in Hudson, which is why I'm here to speak tonight. My grandfather was an alderman and a mayor of Hudson. My father was a fireman and a fire chief, so I'm well aware of the sacrifices you make to serve us, and I appreciate that. My background was in teaching, but I became interested in healthcare because I was on the Frederick Hospital Board, and I understand negotiating contracts with larger facilities, which we did, but they were shorter contracts, and we kept control as much as possible, and I think that's the key in this situation. I am currently an ARP representative, one of the hundreds special representatives, and my field of specialty is healthcare. I traveled to DC to lobby. I've studied the Healthcare ACA Act, and I do realize they will be changing obligations financially for people. I also believe that the cost of the ambulance service could double for those of us that might use them. Unfortunately or fortunately, I've been an ambulance user. I had a heart attack in Luck, Wisconsin, and I was transferred to Amory, Wisconsin via ambulance, and then to United. Those people knew me, knew about me, and cared about me. I also believe that Stillwater Hospital is a very good hospital. I've had two successful surgeries there, so I'm not knocking Stillwater Hospital. But I am here to say that I think local control is very important, because if this thing goes south, you're going to hear about it, and if you had more control over it, I think that would be a better situation. I feel that while I've studied what I could find on this information, I feel that it hasn't been presented sufficiently to the residents of Hudson, and I think you need at least more time before you seriously consider this contract. I understand you've spent time, but a lot of people are not aware of all of the instances. Someone said, "Well, Stillwater would come free if we needed them, if you fell," or whatever. I'm not sure I understand that. I fell out of bed in River Falls, and we called the police, and they came. So I don't think that's an issue. I also believe that Hudson's tax system is quite fair and quite reasonable compared to a few other places I've lived. So I think most people would be worth paying more per taxes rather than possibly double an ambulance run. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker in favor of the contract? Is there another speaker in favor of the contract?
Hi, I'm Jeanette Kuhn, 1600 Maxwell Drive is the place of my business, and I live in Troy Township. Most of what I planned to say tonight was already spoken by Mr. Nat, Mr. Saltis, Burning, so I don't want to be repetitive. Let me put my glasses on, as I'm aging too and can't see very well. But I'm one that likes to gather facts, so in the beginning, I had no clue where I stood on this issue. I just like to gather facts, look at the issue that way and make a decision. So I reached out to different people to get some statistics. Unfortunately, St. Croix EMS could only provide a response time of 8.5 minutes, and when I asked for more detail, I couldn't get anything. So that, to me, that was a red flag. When I reached out to Lakeview, I got a 517-page document that had on here each incident date, the number, the time it went out, the response time, how many miles it was, and what the disposition was. So I personally was impressed with that because I like to sort through data. So that was one indicator, such as if you're looking at a resume, you know, who might be the best fit moving forward for this position. So that's just one point. I won't go through all the other numbers that have already been presented, because we already know that the system going forward is broken and needs some resolution. The other thing that has bothered me personally is all of you have put a significant amount of time into this. It has been going on for a year, and I would just like to express gratitude for that and know that not everybody is against you, whether it's Mr. McCormick or mayor or some of the other ones. I think in general, we appreciate the time and effort that you're putting into this Mr. Pearson already spoke to my point about Hudson Hospital and the managing contract with Health Partners, and I think most people here would acknowledge the positive attributes that has brought to our community. So for those reasons, along with all of the financial data, exemplary level of service that Lakeview Ambulance Service potentially offers, I recommend you vote yes on this contract. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Roy Schoberg. I live at 1108 Vine Street. I'm the one that had the goats. That's a non-serious matter, but your health is very serious, and so I come today to address that issue, not just from my personal perspective, but also from the perspective of having the privilege of serving as the county supervisor for one-third of the population of the city of Hudson. I spoke before today's meeting with the county administrator, Pat Thompson, with corporation counsel, Scott Cox, and with the head of the emergency services dispatch team who's in this room right now, Steve Cock. As of this morning, there is still a compatibility question between our $8 million new radio service that's been installed throughout the county, of which $1 million went towards radio service right here in the city limits. We've just invested $1 million with the county, and now, if you switched over to the other service, unless this is worked out by some technicians, if my wife is having a cardiac arrest, I place a call to 911, and they, after taking my long message, then have to, as is presently the case with Somerset, "Go get them, boys." Presently, an automatic dispatch does not go to the EMS service if we switched over to Lakeview. So what would happen is that dispatch service, I guess this is pretty serious.
Yeah, a big one out.
As I learned from my insurance business, they don't make trial runs. That's a real deal going on there. That's a real deal going on there. As I learned from my experience of talking with the county personnel, if we call into the dispatch service under our present system, not with Lakeview, as I'm making comments to the dispatcher, another dispatcher just next door is reading what's being typed in. They're already in touch with the ambulance. It could be before a couple minutes, someone's coming to rescue my wife. They don't have to take my phone message and then pick up the phone and then call Lakeview. Now, that seems like a pretty big deal, one or two minutes, whether or not my wife has cardiac arrest, or whether maybe my granddaughter is choking on some candy. One to two minutes delay. So as of this morning, I ask, has this been worked out? It hasn't been worked out yet. So what's the big rush with approving something tonight? Maybe we end up with Lakeview. I'm not here to comment on that. Maybe we end up there, maybe that's the best deal, but not tonight. Not until we know we can have our $1 million investment that I made on behalf of this county as a taxpayer with all of my friends here for a state-of-the-art radio dispatch service. You should go down and visit, it's quite the deal. So let me just comment on a couple other things. First of all, the nursing home is not $2 million in debt, so forget that one. So I just commented on the now, that we have a communication glitch still present that has to be worked out before anybody can sign a contract. And I commend the efforts of Mr. McCormick and Mr. O'Connor, because I know what it takes to stand out in front and take a leadership role. You know, it gets hot in the kitchen, doesn't it? I've been there. I know, and a lot of the friends that come after me are in this room right now. The future, though, let me just comment on that too. Yes, there has to be a long-term solution. It could be with partnering, though, with a county. The county has already this countywide dispatch service. Why not link that in? Why not get some other partnership with another hospital? We've now heard with Health Partners and with Lakeview. We haven't heard anything from the hospital that serves River Falls and Baldwin, so why don't we hear from other organizations too? The only point, and I'll rest here, is that it's premature to go forward on any deal today without the communication situation ironed out. And you've heard very eloquently from a lot of other people who picked apart the contract, and I think the contract can be improved. It was written, obviously, not by our legal staff, but by the legal staff for Lakeview. It's very good in their favor. I'll end with my comments. Thank you for listening. Thanks for receiving.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the contract? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the contract? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the contract? All right, so anyone who would like to speak against the contract? Yes, sir.
I live up on Fur Street. I've been a resident for 50 years. Nine of those were with the EMT, as an EMT. I've taken many calls. I watched people die. I watched the ambulance take them away, and I watched them come back, and the time element involved is critical. I had a two-car head-on, eight people. I had to roll Woodbury, Stillwater, and Lower St. Croix. But in the meantime, EMTs came any way they could, in police cars or their own car. We called in everybody we could. But the eternity of time is a critical element. You're proposing to have two ambulances with two people in each ambulance. You can transport how many people? Two. One in each. Critical. You have more on the ground that are critical. They have to be attended by trained people. Yes, the fire department has good people. They're compassionate. Police are good, too. They're compassionate, but they're not trained. You have to have people on the ground. If you disband the organization you have today, you're going to lose that experience and dedication. I know that money is a big element. I hear that, but I don't hear improved service. I want improved service. If we're going to change service, I want to be assured that we're going to have an improved service, not a lesser. And the thing about it is, you can't equate dollars to lives. We have to be careful. If we make a move, we have to be careful that we look out for the people. You need money. Do like the city water department did. They tacked on a hydrant charge because they were running low on money. We all pay that. The school has hit us with a supercharged tax increase. We all will understand if you tack on a small amount onto our taxes to help defray the cost of the EMT service. Think about that before you move to change service. Thank you.
I've asked you, please, please, just kind of keep it down in here. Before we continue, I do want to speak to the people that are in the other rooms that are not currently in the chambers, that if you wanted to make a comment, to make your way over to the room. We've been at it about a little bit more than an hour and a half and like to try to wrap this up pretty soon, but we do want to hear from everybody who came here this evening to speak. So with that, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the contract? In favor of the contract, okay. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the contract?
Good evening, council members. My name is David Recker. I live on Hanley Road in Hudson. And I moved to Hudson after a deployment in Iraq with the US Army. And what brought me to Hudson was a sense of community and the people of Hudson. By selling the EMS program you have now, which is a jewel in the EMS industry, you're losing a great sense of community and a sense of purpose that the people in the community have. The counter-drug program you have, that Hudson has a drug problem, as many communities do, and the EMS program and police program, things like that, give a mentorship to people of the community, and the kids in school, something to look up to, something to work What's the price of that? What is the cost that you gain by losing the face of EMS in the community? Paramedics that know the community members intimately, they know the streets and houses, they don't need a fancy GPS system, because they know exactly where they are. They live in the community. That's all.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any speakers for the contract? Speakers for the contract? Next speaker against?
First of all, President Obama, President of New Hampshire, and eleven hundred St. Croix Heights, and I also thought my friends from Hilton fall out here. This is... First of all, I would like to commend the efforts of everybody, everybody on the police and EMS. They do a wonderful job. And I would also like to commend the efforts of our mayor, Kyle. But this should not be about money. You have people's lives, lives around here, because when people, when people call 911 and they need help right away, and it's so, so good to have people we know in the ambulance squad, because they do a wonderful job, and we are all children, children of God, and we all deserve the great medical care. So I'm not in favor of any proposal by Health Partners, because response times are going to be delayed, and you can not put a price on human life. And if you do put a price on human life, you open yourself up to violence, and the fact that Mike Diamond said he can't make you and make you wasn't available, that's a pretty self-explanatory figure, how people's lives, lives are in the line here, and we're glad we paid to keep our EMS logo. God bless. And God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, Ramsey. Any speakers in favor of the contract? Speakers in favor?
Hi, my name is Paul Santors. My grandfather was from this town.
I was asking for somebody right now, Paul, somebody that was in favor. I just was waiting for that. Is there anybody that wanted to speak in favor?
Let's put the mic back in the podium.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
That's where the cameras, please, and thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Santors. I didn't plan on speaking here tonight. My grandfather was from this town. My parents are from this town. I'm from this town. I actually used to work for Gary's father, right alongside of my late brother Randy, who was on the fire department. And I think it's absolutely unconscionable that we would be sitting here thinking that we might pull a truck from the Hudson Fire Department. It just doesn't make sense. And one thing that hasn't been brought up is as costs go up, our tax base is going to go up. There's businesses coming into this community. There's going to be more revenue coming into this community, and that's going to offset those costs a little bit. That's another thing that people haven't talked about. And the contract, when you look at the contract, it's completely one-sided. And then having to make a cellphone call? You know, what's that about, to get EMS service? I'm also aware of, last week, twice, Lakeview already could not support their area, called St. Croix EMS to take their calls. Now, they're not adding any more trucks, so what's going to happen there? I absolutely agree, it's definitely too early. There needs to be more discussion, and this needs to be tabled tonight. That is my opinion, and I thank you very much.
Any speakers in favor of the contract? Any speakers in favor of the contract? Any other speakers opposed to the contract?
People that know me know that this is not what I like to do. My name is Carol Smith. I'm in District Four. I live on Salvia Lane over by where the dog track is growing. And I just have different points from all the things I've been listening to and going through. The response time for the EMS and the fire is four minutes. They have to be within four minutes of the station. It may take two minutes to get to the scene. Once they're in that ambulance, they are leaving. I don't know how we can say that Lakeville, whatever, however they can get here quicker than what our St. Croix EMS is already doing. They are going to take, if they take us on, that's a larger area with the same amount, five ambulances, two in Hudson, two in Stillwater, one in North St. Paul. They can't get here that fast. We also have all the first responders. This is emotional for me, because I was an EMT. I quit when my son was two. My husband was on the fire department. When he died, my son was in the driveway calling in the fire and the ambulance and getting them to his dad. They knew Cody. They knew Dan. They knew what was going on. And that's what this whole town is about. These EMTs know who Lee's town is. Is it emotional? Yes, it is. But they also do an awesome job. They are taking care of us. They do cross-training between the departments, the fire, the ambulance, the police, they're doing cross-training. The rescue boat, the rope rescue, all that training that has been going on, and they are good at what they do. They have saved a lot of people. Lakefront is a huge area that gets used constantly. There's tons of runs down there. And if our two trucks are gone from Hudson, now you're going to have to bring one from Stillwater or North St. Paul. They're not going to get here in time. And we're adding the new baseball field. That's a whole other section on the other side of town. How are they all going to get there? We will pay taxes more, that's all right, because if we go with this route, our taxes may stay the same, but my out-of-pocket money is going up, because I'm going to have to pay my insurance higher for mileage, higher for care. A paramedic and EMT is a good team. We can get there. The EMTs, they were their pagers. You may have, whatever the numbers were, I don't have it, I can't remember, that are on call, but the rest of the squad, all 20, 30 people, have their pagers on. They will go to that scene and be there. And the firemen are there as manpower to pull people out. If it's a fire and the EMS is not there, like they said before, a fireman could die, a family member in the house could die, because they're here now, they're in our town, they're not coming from somewhere else, and they're going to take care of us. And as also somebody mentioned about just the community itself, the EMS, the fire, the police, they do the trainings at the school, the prom training. I think it was, I don't know if it was Active Shooter or what it was, but it was something at the high school, where they went there and they did that training, the prom, teaching those kids that you're not invincible. You can get in a car accident going to prom if you drink. This town has a huge drug and alcohol problem, and they're there. They're teaching those kids that if you drink and drive, you could die, and this is what's going to happen to you, and they showed them. Like I said, I can't remember what the last training was, Active Shooter or just something that was happening at the school. That training is the key. This town needs to know that they're there, and I don't know if that can happen if we sell out. We need to... We need to keep it in town, keep our citizens safe, and know that we have somebody that's gonna take care of us, and be here within that four or six minutes. And not have a, maybe we'll have an ambulance in town. Cause that, from what I can read, was not a guaranteed thing. It's a possible, that we'll have two here, but no guarantee.
Any other speakers in favor of the contract? Any speakers in favor of the contract? Any other speakers opposed to the contract? I see two. You start here. Come on up. Again, we're, we're getting to the point here where, you know, let's try to keep it not repetitive and new, new information possible.
Possible.
Okay, good, thank you.
My name is Sarah Atkins, and I live at 925 First Street. I'm in District Five. Um, I, some of what I'm gonna say is a little bit of redundant, but I think it's really, really important to emphasize that this is about community and that our current system is a fantastic one. The, the, this is more about the health and the welfare of the people that you serve, and this is a very important decision. We all recognize that. As a daughter and a caregiver to two aging parents, both now gone, I can attest to the speed that our first responders arrive. I can also tell you that on every single call made, they beat the ambulance every single time. Most recently, I was at my disabled sister's house, and she had a seizure, and once again, the first responders beat the ambulance. So I believe that these folks that we're talking about, they're the, the thread that makes our community strong, that makes the fabric of our community stronger. They don't work because it's their job, they work because they love serving the people of our community. You cannot make this simply a financial decision. This is a decision of what is best for the people who live here. Can't put a price tag on the lives, as been, has been said before. On a, on a different side of this, I've only heard one person mention, and I believe it was Roy, I come from the construction industry, and every single job that I sell to, we have to have competitive bids, or they, they require competitive bids. And if we won't even build a building in Hudson without having it be competitively billed, bid, why would we just look at one solution at one company? Why aren't we looking at several? So it's a, very apparent that this contract is in, uh, Lakeview's favor. Of course it's gonna be. They didn't have anything to compete with. So I ask that we slow down, take more input from the community, and then let's follow some rules about having this competitively bid if we do decide to make a change. Thank you very much.
Any speakers in favor of the contract? Speakers opposed? Opposed to the contract?
Hi, my name is Jason Warner. I live at 1127 Bald Eagle Road North. I just have three short points. Um, one, the contract is, again, obviously against Hudson and for the hospital. I think it needs to be renegotiated. Two, there's been no talk about what if we have a bridge disaster and the ambulances won't be able to get over here? And it happens often where we have accidents on the bridge that shut 'em down, we have flooding, many other things. And, uh, number three, uh, I just don't understand why it's taken this long to get to this point and why we're suddenly having to rush to this. It, it just doesn't make sense. So please, wait and consider more options, like a lot of other people have been mentioning. Thank you.
Any speakers for the contract? Speakers for the contract? Any additional speakers against the contract? We got a long agenda ahead of us yet here tonight, so.
Well, maybe it isn't short already, that's the thing. Uh, Lee Wyland, I, uh, 418 Elm Street, uh, District Five now. It was four when it was four, but now it's five. The council is in a very unique position this evening. You are trusted. You are trusted because you provide excellent EMS services, fantastic fire services, wonderful police services. So we're in a unique position, or you're in a unique position. The people here are because they want to continue that excellence. We've heard that over and over again, that we're afraid that we're gonna lose the services that we already have by moving to a, another entity. And we've written a lot about it, we've read a lot about it, but still, it's an entity of risk. We don't know what that future really is gonna hold. So jumping from here to there is terrifying. Okay? I gotta, gotta say that front first. EMS works for the city. Right? So that means that they are people of the city, they work for the city, they know the neighbors, they, they work for the city. When that entity becomes part of Lakeview, they work for Lakeview. They still provide services, but it's a different alliance. I work for a company versus working for the city in which I provide my services. So there's a different feeling of who I belong to. So the cost differences we talk about, we have levy limits we have to worry about, we have, as things change and move to Lakeville, we know for, or sorry, um, Lakeview, we know for sure their costs are gonna increase, and they'll get passed on to us. So that still was gonna challenge our budget as their costs to us continue to rise, which, depending on how it happens, we'll have no control over. If we continue to maintain the service here, services here, we have control over where the budget is gonna go, how much we're gonna spend. We can ask the people, are you willing to spend this much more to build a building or this much more to staff? If we take that control and give it away entirely, we will just be given the bill again, and again, and again. So that's been spoken to a couple of times here. We wanna control those increases. So my, yeah, sorry. Shouldn't be nervous, I sing in front of people, but anyhow. Um, my last, my closing point is this. As a council member, and, um, I know that, that I came into council with a lot of questions. I normally came in with an idea of what I think the direction's gonna be, and by after listening to the discussion, I had to formulate what my concepts were. If you have a shadow of doubt that you will not be able to provide the same services with Lakeview as we can with the current EMS, if you have a shadow of a doubt that I'm not sure how this transition is gonna work, it's not fully baked, and it's not ready for a vote. So our emergency services are in your hands.
Any speakers for, any speakers for the contract? Any speakers against the contract?
Hi Lance Ross, 1507 Northridge Drive, citizen of Hudson, but also I will say I'm a St. Croix EMS member. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your, uh, saying that we've got a timeline here and, and we've got other agenda items, but I do remember when I requested this, uh, public forum, that I suggested we do it in a bigger venue because we'd have a large turnout, and that we do it without an agenda so you didn't have to rush tonight. So, something that we discussed earlier, so. With that being said, I think there's two good services here. Lakeview, I know John Mueller, I know the other folks at Lakeview, I know Matt, know a lot of their paramedics, worked with them this weekend on an event. Very good service. St. Croix EMS has a good service as well. Some of the discussions that started this whole piece, I'm not sure because not everybody was privy to all of that, um, but there was discussion about partnerships and collaboration. So I'd like to see if we can try to get back to that again. We might be at, like, uh, Mrs. Bernard mentioned, might be able to do a hybrid, might be able to do something else, but I don't think we've fully looked at everything. We've talked a lot about sustainability. I agree. But I think some of this has been coming down the road for a while. It's not for a lack of effort from EMS chiefs that were mentioned as well. They've mentioned, they've seen that we need to do something different over time. Your past three chiefs have mentioned we need to change this up. It's gone to the EMS commission, it's gone to the finance committee, it's come to here. We haven't done anything. Now we're at a point where it's unsustainable. I question what other city services are that way. Where are we at, where we're not, or we're moving down a path of unsustainability if we're not listening to some of our folks that have mentioned in the past, we need to look differently? This isn't the first time this has come up. If we wanna look at this, let's do it. Let's open this up. We do studies for our Lakefront property. We do traffic studies. We do lighting studies. We're not looking at a study for EMS. We're not understanding what our true needs are. What's currently going on with the ACA? What's currently going on with trends of cities our size? What's going on across the board? What's best practices? We've heard two paramedic model, we've heard other models. There's a lot of ways you can do this. There's a lot of good service out there. Again, Lakeview, very good service, St. Croix EMS, very good service. But are, have we truly looked at this? Are we truly informed across the board as a council? It's been mentioned in the past, it sounds like they've gotten more information later. And this is coming from council members saying in the past, not sure I've got everything, but it sounds like they've gotten some, but are we looking at truly what is our needs currently, and what's our needs for the future? We talk about the future. What does this look like five, 10 years down the road? And do we have that identified in the contract? We're a growing community, that's been mentioned as well. Are we growing with the times? We haven't in the past, and that's why we're where, that's one of the reasons why we're where, where we are today. I think we just need to open this up, slow down, get some more input, and, uh, take a look at this a little bit more broader. So, thank you.
Any speakers in favor of the contract? Speakers in favor of the contract? Any additional speakers against the contract?
So before I begin, Mr. Webber, in our emails, who asked? Kevin Hartman. I live at 1531 First Street, District Three. In our emails, you asked for the petition from residents of the city. It's not current. There's about a hundred more signatures that were added, but there's close to 1,400 people that live in the city, own businesses in the city, are adjacent to the city, that want to save St. Croix EMS. So, my prepared remarks. My name's Kevin Hartman, I live at 1531 First Street. Yes, both of my parents are on St. Croix EMS, which does make me one of the people whose opinion on the matter is considered biased and has been dismissed by you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. McCormick. I don't benefit from my parents taking call, nor receive any financial gains from it. What I do receive is a peace of mind knowing that if I have to call 911 for an emergency, I know that there's close to 40 trained and dedicated members in my community that are going to respond to that call from my city, which we only pay $14 per year for. Lakeview Ambulance and John Mueller state that their service is far superior to St. Croix EMS because they have two paramedics in each ambulance. There is no evidence based on any study by any governing body, by the EMS RB, or any service that would support that claim. In fact, here's a study from Dr. Gilarducci, the EMS director of Santa Cruz County, California, stating that they're the last, uh, last county in the state of California to operate with a two-paramedic model. I believe that if, uh, the cities of San Francisco, Sacramento, San Diego, Los Angeles can operate with a one-paramedic and one-EMT model, we can too. At the April 10th meeting, Mr. Mueller stated that under their model, the city would have two ambulances based in the city of Hudson. That is the key word, "based." There is no guarantee that anytime there'll be two ambulances in the city, or even one, as Mr. Mueller stated that they would only need one under his model, further alluding to the fact Lakeview will not keep two ambulances in the city. Lakeview states their current dynamic deployment model, they can have ambulances out the door in 90 seconds, anywhere in their service area under 20 minutes. They state their data supports that. Their data recording system through Alina removes all response times over 20 minutes, considering them anomalies. Lakeview also uses post-hospital transports back to nursing homes as calls, logging them with less than a one-minute response time, further skewing that data. Mr. Mueller alluded to this at the April 10th council meeting, stating that their data is proprietary and could be skewed as such if they wanted to. Through an open records request, St. Croix County Dispatch, it's easy to see that a pattern of in-route and arrival time is much longer than the respective 90 seconds and 20 minutes, as Mr. Mueller has stated, exist. On June 6th, St. Croix EMS responded to a call for a drowning on the St. Croix River at the end of the Dyke Road, the ferry seemed Dyke that you want to take St. Croix EMS's budget and use to develop. Due to St. Croix EMS's excellent response time, they were able to save the life of one of the drowning victims and recover the body of the other victim. Lakeview Ambulance has paid to provide mutual aid assistance to St. Croix EMS as they had all three of their ambulances in service. Lakeview was able to respond to St. Croix EMS anyway, further confirming Mr. Takasha's comments at the June 1st meeting. When calling St. Croix EMS, or calling, excuse me, calling St. Croix Dispatch on June 9th to gather information and file that open records request, St. Croix EMS, as I was on the phone, was being paged to Somerset Township, which is in Lakeview's service area. How could they possibly state that they provide a superior service to the residents of Hudson and surrounding communities when they currently cannot do that for their own current area? The city council, led by Tom McCormick and Rich O'Connor, has conducted a clandestine mission through closed session and backdoor meetings to get rid of St. Croix EMS, based on the public stating of trying to find a better service for the city, when all you're attempting to do is open up more funds to develop Lakefront Park. Mayor O'Connor, you've already gone to department heads across the city, telling the Better Hope that this passes, or your budgets are gonna be cut. You're slowly bleeding St. Croix EMS's budget dry, paying out almost $23,000 in legal expenses out of St. Croix EMS's budget so you can get rid of St. Croix EMS. At the last EMS commission meeting, Alderman and Cormick, you questioned the loyalty and dedication of St. Croix EMS's members to the community, stating that if they get rid of St. Croix EMS, why don't they just respond anyway?
That's BS.
How can they?
That's BS.
How can they feel dedicated to a city and to a council when you're trying to get rid of their jobs? The fact that the committee for the sale of St. Croix EMS to Health Partners is led by a council member that has current pending litigation with Health Partners raises more concerns of bias and quid pro quo accusations. This is not the Minnesota House, and this is not Forest Lake. This is Hudson, Wisconsin, and we do not tolerate backdoor government. We demand transparency and accountability. Over 1,000 residents, business owners, community members have signed a petition online letting you know that we value our lives more than $14. We also, as a city, see, as a city and a community, have a very long memory. We remember how we are treated and how we are represented. If you truly care about this city, the surrounding communities, and the citizens you serve, you will vote no on this issue. If you do not, the city and its residents will remember that the next time we step into the voting booth. Please value the citizens of this community more than $14. Thank you for your time.
My name is Adam Van Nook. I do not live in the city of Hudson, do not live in township of Troy, or town of Hudson. I currently live at 1347 216th Avenue, which is Star Prairie Township. I do, however, have a little bit of a pony in this race, as my wife does work for this service, to be clear. But I wanna talk to you a little bit about this really fancy word, dynamic deployment, cause it sounds really cool, but we hear that there's gonna be two ambulances based here in Hudson. Awesome. Two. I was just over at the station, we have three. I don't know if anyone noticed that. Those three are frequently going out. So we're already, by choosing this, if we, if you choose to go this route, you're already reducing your ambulance service by one ambulance. How is that responsible to your residents? Let me go further on that dynamic deployment, though. Uh, I wear many hats, I'm a service director in Clear Lake. I'm also a public safety dispatcher at MSP Airport. And I wanna be clear that I do not represent their opinion. And I want to be clear that I do not represent their opinion in any way, shape, or form. This is what I have viewed, what I have witnessed, and I'm just passing this along. The ambulance service that provides service to MSP Airport is contracted to base an ambulance on airport property. Roughly speaking, I only work 10 out of every 14 days for 12 hours at a shift, so I can't say with any certainty, but from the time that I've been there, I've seen their ambulance go out of the airport property easily 30% of the time, with little fail. Where are they going? Basing somewhere else, not at the airport, not serving the people of the airport, left to the fire department to first respond to people who have cardiac arrests, or narcotic overdoses, or anaphylactic reactions. Is that really serving the people by basing an ambulance when it's never even actually at base? I also want to mention that I've also witnessed an ambulance service, remain nameless, put themselves on scene via CAD system one minute before they were even on scene. So, how good are response time numbers when ambulances are putting themselves on scene before they're even actually there? Kind of skews the numbers a little bit, doesn't it? Seven minutes looks great. Couple other things. Lakeview EMS can't legally run medic and EMT. It's not allowed by their operations plan in the state. Hudson can. New Richmond can. Baldwin can. Everyone else can. Lakeview cannot. Before Lakeview can even operate in this area, they have to do a new operations plan, which is subject to review of the state. Who's to say that's going to get approved? They operate now as they currently are, in St. Joan Somerset Township, but there's no guarantee that that operations plan will even be approved, given this dynamic deployment that they're talking about. One other thing about dynamic deployment, and I'll stop wasting your time here. The thing that concerns me from a service director's standpoint in Clear Lake is this dynamic deployment means that it's very likely, while I don't mind my call volume going up, it's going to go up to areas that I don't normally serve. Because if Lakeview has both ambulances out, which is very likely, and the other three, four ambulances, whatever they have, are also on calls, as has been witnessed three times over the last two weeks, who covers this area? Baldwin, New Richmond? As those ambulances are drawn this way, New Richmond only usually has one or two ambulances staffed, Baldwin one or two, maybe three. Now what? Now, all of a sudden, I'm having to leave my residents in the dust, because now I'm being called further west, because this city made the poorest decision possible by leaving their ambulance service left out in the wind to go to a corporation who cares nothing more than money and patience. You're not only affecting your residents, you're affecting the entire county and the counties that surround you. And that is the poorest decision you could possibly make. This is the most selfish decision you could possibly make. Look past yourselves, look past your city, and think about the overall response area, and think about what's best for everybody in St. Croix County. Because guess what? Everybody in St. Croix County comes to Hudson. Why? Shop, eat, spend money. Their tax dollars, the income that you get from their tax dollars, come from everybody else in this county, and they'll remember what you did too. But I'm not going to eat that far away. Neither is St. Croix Falls. I'll go somewhere else. You don't need my tax dollars.
Any speakers in favor of the contract? Any speakers in favor of the contract? Any speakers, additional speakers, in opposition to the contract?
Sort of short here, sorry. First, I want to say thank you for extending the time. You see the interest, and you're responding, and that's terrific. And I want to say, I apologize, because I didn't really plan to speak.
Can we get your name and address?
Oh, so sorry. Yeah, Kathy Harriman, 5th District, right in town. Didn't really plan to speak. I wasn't even sure if I was going to make it tonight. I was late to the issue. But what I heard was that, "You're going to cut service? You're going to cut it, to outsource it, to some corporation? That can't be right." So, I have to show up. I have to find out what's really going on here. I've got to let the people, pro and against, speak to the points of the issue. We've had some really wonderful speakers, so, and some, I hope you replay the recording of, I'm sorry, gentlemen, I don't know your name, but he gave you some data that you're going to have to watch about 30 times, just to be able to digest all that he said. But so, I came here going, "That can't be right. We're one of the richest counties in the state. We've got public works projects all over the place to beautify our city? What do you mean we can't afford emergency medical services? I haven't heard my fears put to rest. I've heard new information scares the heck out of me." And I just want to say, maybe I'm jaded, maybe I'm naive, but I like to think that when the people here show up and keep you over your time, and the ratio of pro and against is four to one, that you know where the people stand. And I want to think that my head and my husband worth more than maybe $14, $15 an hour, or dollars a year, I guess. I don't care if it's dollars a month. But what I'm concerned is that all you heard is, "Let's table this issue. Let's put this off to another time, when all of us who are working late, who don't have time to research this stuff, who aren't computer savvy, who maybe can't get the transportation out of the nursing home to be down here, don't have a voice, and you just table it and vote later." I'm also concerned that all you hear is, "Raise taxes. That'll fix it. We'll pay whatever you want." Yeah, I'm not so sure about that either. But I do have a question for you. You saw the ratio of people. You know what the people said. Are you going to support what the people want? Or are you going to work your own agenda?
Any other speakers in favor of the contract? Any other speakers in favor of the contract? Any opposed to the contract? Okay, we got two more. Again, please state your name and address.
My name is Penny Beard, and I live at 207 12th Street. Mr. McCormick, I do appreciate you finally returning my phone call. I don't know what happened back in March, but I most certainly did contact you, so I is extremely grateful that you took the time to speak to me, your constituent. What I have gathered online, whether you're for or against this, my fellow citizen, is that our elected officials haven't been really sharing this much. I work nights, so I'm not going to get the ability to come to the council meetings. Sometimes I'm just too damn tired to sit there and read. And I read the draft that is posted on the website. And then I read it again. I'm not a lawyer. I work at Freedom. A lot of you might see me. My father-in-law served lower St. Croix Valley for 30 years as a firefighter. My daughter was served a week before her 18th birthday, when she had a febrile seizure. I was on the phone with a friend who lived in Columbus, Ohio at that point in time. She was ready to hang up on the phone and call our 911 dispatch, because I was too terrified to implement CPR that I learned in high school. The individuals that showed up were there in under two minutes, because they happened to be driving by. And that ambulance took her to regions at our request. You don't want to hear emotional stuff. It's hard to separate emotional stuff. I don't recall reading a proposed contract with Health Partners in Hudson Hospital. And I'm sure there's a lot of fine folks at Hudson Hospital. A handful of years ago, my mother was having a stroke. She's diabetic. We didn't know that at the time. The time, we didn't make very much money, and she didn't have health care. She had moved down from Malax to live with me after her life partner died. My stepfather passed, so she needed to come stay with us. She was having a stroke. She looked like she was drunk. She didn't touch alcohol, nothing. We're all trained, "Watch for these," slurred speech, you name it. I personally drove her to Hudson Hospital. They said, "Okay, don't go to the clinic, go back to the ER." You know what the ER told me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. McCormick? And it's fact. It's not emotional. This is fact. They were checking us in. I was straight up, "We don't have health insurance. We don't have a way to pay for this." Do you have $200 down? No. You know what they told me? They told me, "You might want to try the free clinic at River Falls." I drove my mother, ladies and gentlemen, and we stood in line at the free clinic to River Falls. I got in there. Their first question is, "What the hell are you doing standing in line?" They took her back. I said, "I don't have money to pay you. I don't have insurance. My mother doesn't have this. I don't give a damn." That's what their staff said, and they took her back. I didn't use the ambulance service. And I understand that I chose that, because we probably couldn't have afforded the cost at that point in time. But that doesn't mean that we're always going to have that choice. I'm pretty sure that the gentleman who got munched by the semi right on down just before the bridge, very recently, didn't have a chance to say, "Hey, you know what? Don't take me via ambulance, because I can't pay for this." My husband and I tend to be conservative. We're not very rich. In fact, we've only been homeowners and property taxpayers for the last two years. Our house, we rented from the Fenners. Lolo stands there now. So, I didn't come, because at that point in time, I was just a renter. I didn't feel that I had the right to speak at a council meeting. And I'll tell you what. Nobody ever educated me to that fact. And so many people that I spoke to, I could have gotten myself fired from my job for being political on the job. I said, "Hey, did you know that we're discussing selling our EMS?" And people's jaws were hitting the damn floor. They're like, "What? What?" People that live within blocks of City Hall, people that live out in Troy Township that might work here in town or passing through. We have Interstate 94 divides our city. We have a very, very heavily trafficked riverfront, just as the water does. And I'm sure that Lakeview EMS does their utmost to do the service to the river users. For us to sit here and just go to a vote tonight, for you guys to vote yes or no on accepting this proposal, when there's so much to an uneducated person that seems to be lacking, I feel it is irresponsible. And not everybody has computer access. Not everybody is able to read everything. And I, like many other constituents, had no clue that this was going on. Maybe, as the gal before me said, "Maybe I'm naive." Maybe so many of our citizens fail in our civic responsibilities to keep up with what's going on. I hate being political, but I've never learned more than I have now, in the past three weeks, that it's unavoidable. I don't care if you're conservative, if you're a liberal. As much as my income can't really afford it, I think that there's got to be some other way that we can fund this and keep it in a city-controlled element. My husband, who is very far to the right, says that ambulance services, police services, and fire services are three things that, no matter where the hell you stand on that political spectrum, no matter what, those are essential to everybody, because you never know. Five minutes from now, one of us might walk out there and get hit by a car, or have a heart attack, or go into a diabetic coma, anything. It's one of those intangibles. And no, you can't put a price on that. I understand the arts and having a library. I know we've all used that, saying, "Hey, we pay more per capita for that than our services." Those things are important too, but I think that we really need to connect with our community in a much, much more meaningful way. Because like I said, I've been in this city for 18 years. This is the first time I've made it to a council meeting. It's the first time I felt that I had the right. And I appreciate you saying that renters have rights, because for the most part of my life here, it was being a renter. I came from Spooner, Wisconsin, and I'm well aware of what has to transpire. And I think also that going into this, if you accept the Lakeview EMS proposal, it's almost like a slap in the face to our partner municipalities. Where is their community awareness? We have a business owner from New Richmond. Was that right? An out-of-town business owner come up and speak. And even though I believe she was on the opposite side of the fence, I'm glad that she did come and speak. But I feel that all of you, including those on the EMS mission, have a responsibility to make sure that everybody affected by your service is made aware. Because if we don't know what's going on, we can't tell you. If I don't know something's going on, I can't say, "Mr. McCormick, you know that issue that just came up the other night in City Hall? Can you explain to me better? Can you help me understand? And, okay, have we looked at this?" Most people don't even know that this was going on. And to go on such a fast track is just totally and completely irresponsible. And I hope that each and every one of you take this to heart. We can't give up local control, and it's nothing against Lakeview. It just seems to be the most ridiculous thing we can see. The first time I came to Hudson, the town was 7,000. 7,000 residents. You know, bigger than Spooner, not as big as Rice, like, whatever. I've watched this community grow. Many people have moved to our district, our city, because of our school district. We just voted and raised our taxes to expand schools. We are bringing in that ballpark team. Finally, something's going to happen with the dog track. If an ambulance is deployed elsewhere, who's going to take care of those people that need it, so if something happens there? You know, I just don't feel that we've really thoroughly looked at what we gain and what we lose in this contract. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers in favor of the contract? Any speakers opposed to the contract? Yes, sir.
I'm going to do a more unorthodox presentation for the sake of potential coverage. Hello, my name is Bobby Moody. I'm a resident up at 470 Bridgewater Trail. My squad car sits out front. Just for background, I'm an North Hudson police officer full-time. I've been working as a paramedic for St. Croix EMS for 11 years. I do not represent any of their thoughts, beliefs, or otherwise. Everything that I share with you tonight is my own opinion, so I want to make that very clear. The thing that I want to touch the biggest base on tonight is I think that a lot of the things that we're talking about in this room, and online, and in agendas, and drafts, and everything, are things that are far above the average citizen, who I think is probably voting. And that's not a detriment to them. I just think that inherently there's legalese that's involved. So, what I'm going to do is take, I guess, a physics approach to why this system simply is of being sold to Lakeview, that that idea is so poor, that while I love working for both right now, Lakeview and St. Croix EMS are a team. We have been for a long time. That's the reason that when we call for mutual aid, that they're one of the people that we call, in addition to the other services in the surrounding area. And they have excellent paramedics, some of them that used to work here that now work there. And I take my hats off to you guys for doing what you do, just like we do here. But I would be surprised if, after I get done explaining and kind of making the point out of this, whether or not he would not even withdraw his proposal. So, I'm going to walk around here a little bit while I talk. Brad, you can probably go halvesies, I suppose, since I'm a runner of water, so. All of these different cups are labeled. One of them is St. Croix EMS, and I'm not sure where he started here, so I will keep it nice and short for you. All right, so Brad, why don't you just grab the St. Croix EMS cup and the Lakeview All right, so Brad, why don't you just grab the St. Croix EMS cup and the Lakeview cup, please? This is just water, so it's not going to hurt anybody. Why don't you stand up and kind of be where you are? So right now, just about every EMS system that I know of in this area, and I've been in the business for a long time, we're all pretty much overtaxed. Even River Falls with four different ambulances is frequently running those out the door. There's already been talk about Lakeview saying that, you know, they can't get a truck down here to help us out when we need it, that we've been up there to help them multiple times. So right now, the important thing I want to, I guess, point out is that Lakeview is a partner with us right now, and we have the ability to call on them for help. Okay? If we then take SCAMS, St. Croix EMS, out of the mix, that is 40 people who come to life every time that pager goes off, whether they're working or not working. They're aware of what's going on, whether they're the on-call crew or not, they're still aware of it. They know when trucks run out, they know when they can come down, and it's an entire army of people that would do it for free. I can tell you that from working for them. But alas, most of us have to try to make a living. I can tell you that I am not impacted in any way, shape, or form as to whether this goes. If I lose my job at SCAMS, I'm not out any money. Doesn't bother me a bit. It does bother me that the service would be decreased, so. And I think the majority of the people that work for St. Croix EMS are not full-time employees. That means that they're doing something else with their lives, generating income. Sorry that I'm turning my back to you, I'm not trying to. They're doing so many other things that the part of their lives that they're putting into this is solely out of their concern for their own community. It has nothing to do with financial gain. So if you decide to go ahead and take SCAMS out of the mix, the water is representative of not only the workload that the service takes on, but it's also representative of the lives and of the people that are involved. So if you take, why don't you add SCAMS load to St. Croix, over to Lakeview? Now, this cup says Hudson Fire Department. If the sale goes through, as far as I'm aware, there is absolutely zero mention of having, I mean, aside from the fact that they can increase costs by having more fire department responses, I have a feeling from the talking to a lot of the firefighters that they didn't get into being volunteer firefighters to constantly run EMS calls, which then does put increased burden, once again, on Lakeview. And now for the sake of making it even, we'll divide this in half because they're going to get our trucks. So I would like to make it clear that we are increasing the amount of trucks that Lakeview will have, but we're also increasing the population they're serving astronomically, and it can't even be covered by two trucks all the time as it is. Resource pool out of the mix. This year, the first responder groups, North Hudson, where I spend a lot of my time, pretty much six days a week for eight hours a day, there are first responders that come to every single call that we have, plus there are that many that come into everything that we're doing. They come from all over the place. If there's a mass disaster in any district up here, and you can't get ambulances out to them because, you know, the bridge option is obviously a thing, but the weather, it's amazing how many car accidents you can have in 20 minutes. Just like to throw that out. And where they are and the ability to get to them, the people that need to get there are the people. Resources can come from wherever they need to come from, but the people need to get there. So now that we've divided up and given them, you know, a little bit more of a chance here, first responders would no longer be in this mix. That also includes police agencies that are out there that have medical direction, the same as St. Croix EMS. It includes the fire department, which has medical direction through St. Croix EMS. This is not something that was being pursued by Lakeview. So we'll go halvesies. First responders are out of the mix if you sell. What do we got here? Oh, yeah, police. Here's an important thing to think about. We go into stuff a lot of times as police officers that require EMS. There are not a lot of police officers like myself who are also paramedics, so for the majority of the time, we are relying on this crew to come very quickly to help the people that are typically involved in assaults and domestics and things that are going on of that nature. They will, again, no longer be able to be involved.
You're going to clean that up, right?
Yes, sir, I will. Yep, I will happily sit here and mop all night. I think we're making the point, but I'll, let me tell you what all the rest of these say. This is New Richmond EMS. They have a city of their own to cover that they can hardly keep up with. If you're talking about paramedic service, there are only two other services that are close, other than Lakeview and St. Croix EMS that have paramedic service. That's River Falls and New Richmond. You get the idea. Interstate crash number one takes out two trucks, even if they're here. We can't call Lakeview for mutual aid anymore because they're already here, burned up, if they're here to begin with. Dive rescue. People have talked a lot about the fact that we've had to go out and take care of a couple kids, one who successfully drowned unfortunately, and one who was very close to it, managed to live because there was a bystander, the new CPR. Those type of calls are something we don't necessarily associate with EMS because of the fact that when I think, most people think of EMS, they think, I called 911 because I was sick or injured, ambulance showed up, saved day. Everybody at SCAMS is cross-trained. They all know what to do in dive calls. They all know what to do when there's fire calls. They all know what to do when there's high-angle ropes rescue when people fall down the hole in the state park. They all know what's going on. No longer a possibility. There's been mention that the police department might pick it up. Good for them if they're able to do that, but I have a feeling that they're just as taxed as everybody else. Here we have Somerset event. Huh. So our two trucks that were promised, when they have the equivalent population of a city almost as large, if not larger, than the city of Hudson moves in all of a sudden, and they're all taking part in activities that, shall we say, are risky. Those people are also a danger to everybody else that's responding to them. It's a taxing on the trucks, it's a taxing on the people, and it's around-the-clock coverage out there. It's not like there's any breaks. Booster days. God forbid that booster days would also occur at the same time as River Falls days or New Richmond's festival or the Somerset concerts or anything else like that, when we're strapped to the gills as it is without all the extra help. But by the sale of SCAMS, you don't have that extra pool of 50 people that are willing to come out, you know, come hell or high water and do their job. Sporting events. Lakeview's not going to hang out for football games. If Timmy goes to get tackled after he throws a pass and all of a sudden breaks his femur and he's laying there in front of crowds and crowds of people because we fail to keep track of our own interests, and he's sitting there on TV for that long, what does that say about us? What kind of litigation comes our way for failure to serve? What kind of response do the people have that work for this agency that then have to suffer and remember all the time that they waited while help came? This one's kind of personal, but I think if you watch TV, you'll know why it's important. Dispatch St. Croix EMS, Officer Don. We have an officer down. Law enforcement on scene, you're needed immediately at the corner of Vine and Crestview, which does intersect. Front officer down. Temp for dispatch, truck coming from Stillwater. Do the ICU meds, bring him out of response time. Low interstate crash. SWAT team call out. You would be absolutely shocked if you sat and listened to the scanner or the radio at how many times that there are people that are now barricading themselves in their house, regardless of what their beliefs are. And every single time that happens, EMS is not just serving the person in that house. They're serving every person on that team, and in our case, we have SWAT medics on our team, which will go in to the line of fire with bulletproof vests on to save the bots of the people that are in there and for the people that's causing all the problem. Sorry if I've lost your attention, Mr. McCormick.
You know what? Just to be fair, there's other people that have had their heads down too.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for attaining your attention.
I'm listening to what you're saying, I get the point.
I don't want to waste any more of your time, so let me get through. Active school shooter. This is something that we've been training for, not only with the University of River Falls, but also within all of our local schools. This is an increasing problem that we have going on. And the fact that there are going to be people that are coming in, maybe going to make it over here on time, and they don't know anybody that they're working with, is a problem. I think the majority of the people that work on St. Croix EMS have either worked for one of the other agencies, currently work for one of the other agencies, or have been to so many calls with them that you could walk up in plain clothes, they know who you were. That's extremely important as far as communication goes, because most of the same-team shootings, if you will, occur because of the lack of communication. If Verizon Tower is down that day and they can't hear me now, and we're trying to call and talk to Lakeview on the phone, that isn't going to work out, and the time delay's insane. Bus crash, two trucks way out. That's on top of the full loads that they're handling all day. What we got here? Transfers. There's a transfer going out of Hudson Hospital at least four or five times a day. Guarantee you that one of those trucks is going to be on it if they're even available. River Falls EMS, as I mentioned, they have enough going on with their entire university and not enough staff. There's been talk of nursing homes. If we have one gas leak in a nursing home, how many people is that to how many people do we have? It takes everybody in this entire public safety community to try to wrangle that, and that's because we know they're all coming. They all have pagers on. There's two trucks maybe taking track of Lakeview. And lastly, we have the second transfer, but that one's going out of Stillwater. Because we tend a lot of time talking about what happens if we get tapped out here. But what happens when we get tapped out in Stillwater? They're doing all the things that they're supposed to do to provide good service to the residents of Lakeview and their entire area that they currently have, but because they took on this extra one, because it's a good business decision for them to make more money, to take on more stuff, you're good. Then all of a sudden, we are taking service away from people all over the place. And I think that's been pretty well-covered, I guess. To close out my comments, what I would say is that I don't think there is any price that you could pay, even if we had the ability to pay all those prices, that's going to miraculously take care of the next five years. It doesn't matter whether Lakeview covers us or St. Croix EMS covers us, those costs are going to go up. The population is going to go up. And as a municipal service, we have the ability to adjust with those trends, and we have control, as you mentioned. As the tax base goes up, we have more to spend. Where does the money come from if there is no tax base and we have no control? It comes at the back of the patients who use the services all the time, and even some who probably wouldn't be able to afford it when their kid breaks their leg in a football game. So I guess I would say that even from a business standpoint, I can't imagine how this seems like a good idea to you guys. I'm not saying that right, wrong, or otherwise, but it seems like a poor decision, and I would think out of respect for the community and what you know needs to be done here, that you would withdraw your contract.
Does anybody have anything to add that we have not already covered tonight?
Actually, a question. And I know. Mary Acub, 861 Daisy Circle. I live in the town of Hudson now, as most people know. I represent District Two, where Bill Olmsted's now. I'd still have my children who live in the city of Hudson though, so I feel like I have an interest in two ways. But I have a question, which I know is not typical of a public hearing, but I haven't heard anyone speak on it, and I've asked multiple people and I've gotten multiple different answers. And I'd like an answer if I can, because I know that someone knows the answer. They have to. If EMS continues in the city of Hudson, if we don't go with the contract, what happens with the other municipalities with the agreement? Because I, my understanding is that the town of Hudson and the village of North Hudson has said that they will not continue to contribute to EMS services if we continue with EMS. So can someone answer that question for me as a town of Hudson resident?
You want to?
No, go ahead.
Can you say that again?
My understanding from, I've asked a question, I don't know the real answer, so I want an answer to the fact that if EMS continues in its current state, as we know, there's different, Town of Hudson contributes to it, Village of North Hudson contributes to it. I have heard, and I have not, I understand I should ask my own elected officials in the township, but I haven't had that time, and so I'm hoping that since this is an issue that's being spoken about, that those that have been involved would know the answer. Will they continue to pay into EMS services, or have they chosen to no longer pay into EMS services, which means those of us who live in the town of Hudson and North Hudson will have to find our services elsewhere?
So the, what I know is that neither of the, none of the other communities have made a decision on what they would do based upon our decision. I guess, I mean, if we were to vote for the contract, then presumably they would all have to follow suit. But independently right now, they've had, definitely had discussions about whether they can continue to afford the service, and they do have proposals that are coming, is my understanding, before the EMS commission, that, excuse me, would reduce their burden and shift that burden to us, the city of Hudson. And so they would like to implement a different funding formula or reimbursement formula for us, and would significantly reduce their overall expenditure and increase ours accordingly. But as far as I know, none of the communities have made a commitment one way or another if they would stay with the system, if we decided to stay with it.
So everybody here is giving their emotional feelings, I, I'm a Parkinson's patient. I get it, okay? Everyone's talking about the city of Hudson residents, but not one person has mentioned what could happen to the town of Hudson residents, North Hudson residents, Town of Troy, if one of those municipalities chooses not to move forward. Unlike the library, they all have to work together or it doesn't happen. Okay, I get that. I don't know if the town of Hudson is going to agree to this or not, so I don't understand why would there be a vote either way until we know we have commitment from the other municipalities. Because where am I going to get my ambulance service from, living in a town of Hudson, if the town of Hudson chooses not to commit anymore? There's a lot of residents there too, and we vote too. Okay? So I don't want any, I'm so frustrated, sitting here.
My understanding is that back in February, the town of Hudson passed a resolution supporting, maintaining St. Croix EMS with revised formulation. They actually have passed a resolution.
That, Jim, as you know, that was based upon information that was not accurate about the number of runs that would have to be done by our fire department as first responders. And that was based upon the information that they'd had originally, thinking that they might have to do anywhere between 400 and 1,200 runs as first responders, which would have been a very costly enterprise, more expensive than the system is right now. So that was, that was why they voted when they did with that information.
Okay, I'd just like to correct just a little bit of what the mayor said. The town of Troy did already agree to whether the proposal with Lakeview goes forward or doesn't go forward. We are committed to this service. So we are going to stay with the Hudson service no matter what decision is made. I will say that at our meetings, the village of North Hudson is very conflicted right now as we're looking at, you know, possibly an $8 to $10 million fire haul, plus expanding the cost of the EMS service by, I think it's about, oh, I don't know if Brendan's here, I think it's, the cost goes up by about $400,000 a year that's spread over the communities. What the communities are looking at is, since Hudson gets most of the service, should we look at the percentage of service that the city is paying for? That's not something that came from the town of Hudson, but that is something that the commission has proposed.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. So what I'm hearing is that nobody knows what the heck's going on yet with all the municipalities. That's what I'm hearing.
With the town of Troy.
Except for the town of Troy. Great. But that's what I'm hearing. Apparently he doesn't like me either, Paul. So, so I, you know, as people ask me my opinion on this, that's the question I've been asking. Because nobody ever asks that question. Not one person has asked that question. Okay? And when I sat up there, not only did I look at it for all the city of Hudson residents, but I looked at it for all of our, all of our county. Okay? And so that needs to be thought about, and it needs to get addressed before any vote occurs tonight, in my opinion. The other thing I'd like to say is, as a past council member, the heckling that's been going on has been embarrassing. And I don't care what side you're on. It's been embarrassing. I'd like to apologize to you, Tom and Rich, for getting beat down up here tonight. I've walked through County Market. I've walked through County Market. I've walked through County Market with my children when I was on this council, and my children are now ages 13, 11, and 8. And I've walked through County Market with my children who got screamed at for votes I've made up there. That's not appropriate in this town. We all say we're community, then act like one. Stop with the childish behavior. Start respecting everybody for their opinions. These guys were elected, whether you like it or not. They were elected. So, their votes are extremely powerful. So, why would you wanna make them mad in the process? Why wouldn't, I'm not saying to kiss butt, I'm saying be respectful. You demand that of them, they should demand it of you. Because this, this community needs to learn to treat each other as they wish to be treated. And it's been long gone for a long time, and I'm getting tired of it. So, sorry for my rant, but man, I've wanted to say that for the last six years. So, here's the thing. Figure out what's going on with the other municipalities, because that's what's affecting me and my children. That's what's affecting people in North Hudson. Nobody knows the answer. There should not be a vote tonight. It should get tabled, and it should get tabled until budget time, when this is when it should be getting discussed.
Thank you, Mary. Does anybody have anything new to add to the conversation?
My name is Bob Bowman, and I live at 1600 Chestnut Drive in District 6, 5, Joyce.
Six.
Six. And I'll be very short. When I hear people say, complain about the rhetoric and how this has turned into such a terrible thing, I think back at how this all started, and how the public was shut out, and all I heard was, "We're gonna have public input, we're gonna have a listening session." The listening session was gonna include John Mueller, who also goes around with the mayor all the time. He's a salesman. That's the way I see it. He's wearing a uniform, but he's selling something, and we're being sold something. And I think it started bad from the beginning, the lack of public input. Some of the things I would've talked about tonight about dynamic models, doesn't matter. I quote, "talked about a month ago, two months ago." But you guys set this up, and I'm saying you guys, we didn't set the agenda in all these meetings. The mayor does. The mayor decides who speaks, the public if they can or not. He chose not to. My opinion is that he chose not to, because he knew this was gonna be emotional, he wanted to get ahead of it, and the sale was on. I think it's short-sighted. I really wanna see a vote tonight, because I wanna see it go down. I think if you don't vote, if you table it, then we're gonna go back to negotiations again, and I was very offended by one of the meetings I did see on TV, that, you know, we got these meetings that were held during the work week, when no one can go. We've got meetings held short notice, we had meetings held where cable access wasn't invited, I've heard different rumors. John Mueller was always there. The person from county dispatch wasn't invited, and he showed up and did a great job of defending himself. You know, I mean, Mr. Mueller almost broke his hip trying to get up to the mic to call the dispatch guy from the county a liar. So, you talk about rhetoric, we talk about things you see on Facebook about calling the people with the blue shirts mob mentality, who's to blame for that? They were shut out from the beginning. So, I'm kind of torn. If I, if I want it tabled, or just start from scratch, you vote it down, start from scratch, show the people that you're listening. You know, maybe, maybe Lakeview's gonna be the solution down the road. I don't know. But I've heard a lot of good things from council members who don't seem to have, they seem to be as frustrated. Randy has said some things on Facebook that I was very impressed with. I don't even wanna talk about if we're spending money on lawyer fees and charging the EMS to make them look worse. I mean, I didn't hear that one before. That's, then you're just setting the table. It's credibility, and I think it's lacking. So, and it starts, unfortunately, it starts with the mayor who sets the agenda. We should've been having these open discussions. You would not have three rooms full of people tonight if you had started this a couple months ago.
Does anybody else have anything additional to add?
Hello, I'm Tara Tontalien. I am an EMT on the service here. I lived in North Hudson, I just recently moved. I know there's a lot of emotions going on right now. I just wanted you all to know that we, or I can't speak for my coworkers, but I respect all of you. I feel bad that it has gone negative, but it's because people care. I mean, I don't do my job for the money. I don't do my job to please anybody. I do it because I care about my community, and I care about all of you too. You guys have been through a lot tonight, sitting here for two hours, listening to us, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for letting us have a voice and be heard. We really appreciate it. As a SCAM staff, we wanna be as professional as we can too. We don't want to say anything bad about anybody, at least me. I just want this to go smoothly and hopefully as peacefully as possible. My whole family's here in this town. My mother and grandmother are downstairs right now, and I just, whatever decision you guys make, just make sure it's for the community. It's for Hudson. If you choose for Hill Partners and you think that's good, great, as long as it helps us, it helps everyone here in this room tonight. If you keep us, that's also great too. But I just wanted to clear up the fact that I don't, I feel bad about this negativity, but it's because these emotions from everyone here in this room, everyone here in this town care, and I know you all care too. You're just trying to do as best for us, and I understand that. And I just didn't wanna have this end in a negative way. So, thank you for everything you all do, and thank you for everyone being here for us. It's just amazing to see the support, I'm sorry, from our community, and it's just nice to hear that you guys are all here today, giving us a chance to speak. So, just thank you, sorry, to everybody.
Does anybody else have anything new to add? All right, well, before I entertain a motion to close this, I do believe there are a few things that need to be addressed, and I will keep this brief. And I wanna really especially thank the last speaker for the comments, because we are all interested in doing what's right for Hudson. I'm sorry if you think that, that we don't have your best interests at heart. We absolutely do. We're here to do the right thing for the citizens of Hudson. I feel bad for what Mr. McCormick has had to go through as elected officials. We don't necessarily think that we're gonna have to put ourselves up for the type of ridicule that we, he, and I have experienced over the last few weeks. Maybe some of it's deserved. But, you know, a couple of things that, that were, that were just wrong on my part, I mean, from what people had to say about what, what I did, I think need to be addressed. First of all, this process began, and a couple of the speakers mentioned this, I was asked to sit in on the negotiations when Hudson Hospital had asked us if we would be interested in transferring our service to them. And that followed a conversation where the commission, EMS commission, had actually asked the hospital if they would be willing to fund one half of a new ambulance that we needed about a year ago. The hospital then said, "Wait a minute, maybe we should discuss a transfer of the operation." I was then asked to sit in on the negotiations, and there was a unanimous vote here by this council, asking me to do that, along with Tom McCormick, and that was reaffirmed at least one other time, and I think twice, frankly. Were there closed-door meetings? Absolutely. Were they secret meetings? Absolutely not. Contract negotiations inherently involve closed-door meetings. Everybody here at the council knew that. Nobody from the council at any point in time when any of the updates were given, had asked to sit in on those meetings. And I don't believe that anybody at that time thought anything untoward was happening in those meetings, other than sensitive contract issues were being discussed. So, that's how this began. There were no clandestine meetings. There were no meetings that were secret, and there was nobody here that did anything that was outside what you would've expected of your elected officials when they were asked to perform a duty for their citizens. And I think that's important to state. You know what? You wouldn't have liked it one bit if there was some type of opportunity that came our way, and we didn't fully explore that. And that's exactly what's happened here. You know, some of the things that I heard about, about timeliness of notice for meetings, I don't know, I, you know, the last meeting with the EMS commission, it was actually with the county supervisors, when Mr. Takash had said that he was, he had received late notice. I had asked one of the county supervisors if he would help me bring the people of interest that were within our service area to a meeting that we were gonna be having on communications. I had expected that that had been done, and I understand that apparently it was done late. I apologize, that was, that was not necessarily my fault, but I'll, I'll take the heat for that, because maybe I should've been the one to make the phone call instead of asking somebody else to do it for me. As far as any, the notice of any of the other meetings, it's all been timely, and we have worked diligently to make sure that notice got out in time for people to be able to get to the meetings that we've had that were public. Relative to the comment about me not allowing people to speak, this was not a unilateral decision on my part. This is council policy, that anything that's on the agenda, we do not allow a citizen comment on in that meeting. That's not my call, that's city council policy and has been for some time. Now, having said that, that didn't mean that at any time when EMS was not on the agenda, that citizens couldn't have commented, and they didn't. They had an opportunity to do that, and any meeting where EMS was not on the agenda, and nobody did it. Nobody took advantage of the opportunity to speak. All right? I never went to the department heads to talk to them about EMS. I don't know where that came from. That's just wrong, flat-out wrong. In fact, there isn't a council member here that can say that I have either asked them for a vote on this issue, or asked them how they were gonna vote on this issue. This is a personal decision that everybody must make on their own, it's a conclusion that they have to come to, and I know that people have said that I bullied people and browbeat people, that just didn't happen. Anybody in here deny that? As for the meetings that were held out in the public over the past week, I was invited to those meetings, and I am willing to go to any meeting that anybody invites me to. That's my job. And I didn't control who was invited to those meetings, I responded to an invitation. I came and answered the questions that were asked of me, and I know that Mr. McCormick has done the same thing. Tom, I'm sorry what's happened to you, and by the way, I'm sorry what's happened to all of you, anybody that got caught up in the negativity here, and I'll tell you, I will flat-out defend each and every one of you and your integrity on not just this issue, but any issue. And I don't care if we're on the same side or not, I will defend your integrity against any comers, all comers, when they start to impugn it or question it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to mention this, and to try to set some of this record straight. We are, believe me, all interested in doing what is right for the citizens of our community. So, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
Motion, got a motion, second, to close a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion's approved.
Could I ask for a five-minute recess, or mini bathroom break?
Sure. All right, next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on draft emergency medical services agreement with Lakeview Hospital.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sorry, Ms. McCormick?
I'm gonna make the motion. I'm making a motion to postpone action on the contract with Lakeview, for the purpose of having the city commission a study to look at the current operations of St. Croix EMS, and the options for delivery of EMS services in Hudson and the current service area. And the reason I'm bringing this motion is because I have received communication from some of my constituents, saying that they wanted to have more study done, and also because there's some people here tonight that have said that they don't think we've thought hard enough about this, and the final thing is, I have a report in my hand that is dated December of 2010, and I got this today. And it was a report that was completed before I started on the EMS commission, and it's called St. Croix Emergency Medical Services Agency Fiscal Analysis Final Report. And I'm gonna make sure that everybody on the council gets a copy of it, but I just wanted to read the first two pages from the executive summary. It said, "The St. Croix Emergency Medical Services Commission selected the Abartis Group to conduct a fiscal review and analysis of its ambulance service located in Hudson, Wisconsin. The review was funded by Hudson Hospital and Clinics as part of the mission and vision of supporting healthcare in the community." What has happened in this discussion is that we have lost total focus that we are a community, trying to find the best option of providing EMS services for our community. It's become an us-versus-them, finger-pointing exercise. None of that has led, or will lead, to a good resolution of this issue. That's why I'm proposing this motion. If we need to take a step back, take a deep breath, stop pointing fingers at each other, and start moving forward with some resolution that may not satisfy everybody, but will lead to the best resolution that we can have for our community. So, there's my motion, and that's the reason for it.
Got a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move that we discontinue, or cancel, or however you wanna say, the contract that is existing at this point, and that we start a new, hybrid type of, as someone said, a new direction with the EMS chief, and I'm willing to also do a, a study, Tom, if, if that's something the others would like to do. But at this point, I'm making the motion to effectively end this Lakeview contract and start over, and move on with all of us in focus, and to find the best path to keeping it in-house, or down the road, if it has to be something else, then we tackle it at that time, if we're told otherwise through some sort of study. That's my motion at this point. Further, I'd like to discuss some of the things that have been said, and how they've been handled, and I'm, I'm disheartened by some of the comments. I know passion, and it's a spirited debate that's been brought out, but tactics that are pointing fingers and bullying people, that's not who we are. Whether it's a council member, whether it's the mayor, whether it's any of you folks, whether it's any of our employees in EMS, it's not called for. Mr. Akub is right, this is not the way Hudson works. We don't bash each other over a difference of opinion. We respect each other's opinion, we move forward, and we agree to disagree. And that's how it should be. We are in a position to allow these folks, and they've come very strong, one way or the other, to say that they support the EMS. But let's do it respectfully, whatever side you're on. That's not called for in this debate. I'll take responsibility if some of my comments were taken out of place, or misconstrued, or spun completely different. I know what I said, and if you wanna talk with me about that at other time, I'm certainly willing to do that. But my motion is stated as so, so.
I have decided to second the motion. I prepared a statement, because I knew if I tried to wing it at this point, it'd be kinda silly, I think. I would like to thank the public for taking the time to voice their opinions here tonight, and for the letters, emails, and calls I received from the citizens of Hudson, Town of Hudson, Town of Troy, and North Hudson, so. So, thank you. Thank you for everyone for being here, for and against. Much of this started as an exercise to see how we can improve funding for our currently underfunded St. Croix EMS. In a nutshell, Lakeview has made an offer to become our EMS care provider. They've agreed to provide two ambulances 24/7, 365, advanced life support ambulances at Hudson Hospital staffed with only paramedics. Their current license does not allow for EMTs. I had known that during the process, but that I've learned a lot in this whole deal. We in turn would no longer have to employ the 40 EMS people on staff and would benefit financially from this, approximately $1.2 million over the next five years, plus the sale of our equipment, essentially free EMS. The question we have to ask is, what is the catch? What do we have to give up to get free EMS? It appears the answer is we would be giving up our team of 40 EMS professionals, and I thought the Blue Cup demo was pretty telling in itself. Public control over our own EMS and the end of our community being community-based EMS as we know it. Some say it's not about jobs. I agree, it's about way more than jobs, just jobs. It's about the people. The culture of 40 dedicated professionals providing our community with emergency medical care. I have received so many emails that say seconds matter and how many times one of those 40 people have shown up well in advance of the ambulance that was called for, in some case saving people's lives. There are a great deal of intangibles that are not accounted for in the numbers. Some say it's not just about the control. Giving up public control of our EMS to a private entity lends itself to all kinds of potential risk. People change, companies change, companies get bought and sold or merged, city councils come and go. You know, once we give up this control, it's going to be difficult or very difficult to go back. I originally thought that the risk here was small, but I know now that it's very high. I can assure you that I've given this an enormous amount of my time, weighing the options, thoughts, ideas presented to me by so many of the parties involved and many of the people that have not had a chance to be heard until tonight. My conclusion, my conclusion is that no amount of money can replace our current EMS people and the public's control over our own safety. I've also concluded that if we were to privatize our EMS going back to what we have now will be next to impossible, meaning I don't, it, it's just not going to be possible to put it back together. I don't have all the answers going forward, but I can assure you that I'm committed to making our existing St. Croix EMS work now and into the future. So, this is why I seconded Randy's motion. I'd like to see us go forward as our current St. Croix EMS.
I too have a statement. First, I've received numerous calls and emails from my constituents, and the vast majority say they want us to keep St. Croix EMS and are willing to pay more in taxes to maintain the same level of service. We need to do a rigorous assessment of the current EMS system and explore every avenue to keep them. Next, there are not enough, so, and when I wrote this, I originally said why I'm voting no on the proposed contract. Next, there are not enough ambulances to cover all the areas that Lakeview EMS services. I'm very concerned that we will not have ambulances available in Hudson when we need them. Also, as we grow and as the LV EMS coverage area grows, there's nothing in the contract to guarantee the same amount of coverage. Essentially, this contract takes the word of the vendor that there is enough coverage. I believe we need an objective analysis to confirm that this is correct. Another concern is the communication problems between the St. Croix County Dispatch Center and Alina's Dispatch Center. Valuable time may be lost and critical errors could be made as the two entities transfer information. I've heard many compelling stories of how first responders were instrumental in saving their lives. Because they are a part of our community, they were there quickly, they were a neighbor and familiar to the patient, and they were competent and knowledgeable. First responders are only in the contract for the Town of Hudson, yet they provide a valuable service in the city. We need to utilize them. I have concerns about the criteria for calling for mutual aid. I have heard from several constituents that Lakeview waits too long to call for mutual aid. And Steve Takash from the county also brought that up in a meeting. During this process, the initial proposal changed drastically after the council approved negotiations. Gradually, as more information has become available, it became apparent that we need to circle back and make sure we are following the appropriate steps for a decision of this magnitude. The first step of the process should be to get input from all stakeholders to articulate a plan and goals for our services. The main goals are pretty obvious. Get to the patient as quickly as possible and give the best possible care, all at a fair cost to the taxpayers. But we've got lots and lots of details that need to be added to that, that plan. We need to verify what the best service model would be for a community of our size and geography. Only then can we look at how to achieve the best service at the best price. A full study of our options is appropriate at this time. Employee input is an important part of the process. A survey of them and group, some group discussions, or a SWOT analysis. For those of you who don't know what a SWOT analysis is, that means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's used often in industry to look at their, their plan. Many of our employees also work for other ambulance services and have ideas on how we can improve our service and make progress toward a self-sustaining model. We need all ideas on the table. I would like to recommend an ad hoc committee should be formed to take these steps. Getting input from all the stakeholders, including the employees, and develop a plan for a self-sustaining service. Look at other services that cover similar areas and find out how they do it in a cost-effective manner. Apply those best practices to our service. I've already talked to River Falls to see how they're doing, and, and they're able to do it for, the city of Hudson residents pay zero per person. The towns pay 10 per, per person, and Prescott pays 17 per person. How do they do that? Make sure that our billing is optimized so that St. Croix EMS is paid for as many runs as possible. If after all these steps are followed and the community agrees that the best option is privatization, we should be looking at more than one vendor. When the city wants to purchase a truck or have a road repaired or plans any other major expenditure, it is put out for bids to ensure that the city gets the best value for the money spent. If we decide that the best course of action is to contract for services, why wouldn't we follow this process? It's the prudent thing to do. Meanwhile, the St. Croix EMS needs the council to show their, show their support by implementing option three as soon as possible. I think that there's enough in the undesignated fund to start this process without affecting our, our credit rating. So, we need to make a, have a transparent process. We need input from the stakeholders, and we need an objection, objective review of the issues and possible solutions.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would, most of this is plagiarized from all the people that I have had the opportunity to talk with about this and listen to and read, read what they had to say. But basically, we need to progress towards a self-sustaining model that no longer requires enormous amounts of capital from our, from municipalities. We need to work, see how, how can we get there? That was, that's a really, answers a lot of the issues that we're trying to address. But it still has to incorporate or contain local support and control. So it's a, it's a, the balance, perhaps the hybrid that we were talking about is, you know, it's a hybrid of some kind that may not exist today. But we need to go out and look at that. We need to find that, that model. I do not think the Lakeview contract is the model that we need to follow.
I have something to say. I didn't say anything now, and I probably should have, so we have to keep an eye on time for me. I'm going to get tired of my babble. First off, I think it's important that I state why I voted the way that I did last Tuesday night. I know there's been a lot of questions in my community about why I voted against the, the motion that was on the floor at the time. Mr. Morissette put the motion on the floor to stop talking about this contract and stop, just stop it altogether. It's very similar to the motion that was made tonight. And I felt in that meeting, we were a day away from seeing the contract that we told Mr. McCormick and Rich, Mr. O'Connor, to sort of vet out. And I want to thank you guys for doing what we gave you the direction to do at the time. But really, the vote for that night was not, not an, not an ideology vote. It's a vote, well, kind of is though. The vote that night was telling all my constituents, no matter what side they were looking on, it was telling them that I wasn't going to listen to them until Monday. And more importantly, what I felt was, it also was meaning that I could be not listening to them at this public hearing tonight, right? This is, this is the process. I'm, I'm very much a, a process. And now I've seen the, seen the contract, and, and to me, I have very big concerns, right? I called Chief St. Martin on Thursday, just asked him from a fire perspective, what, what do you see in a contract that could be a safety concern? Kind of went through all that, kind of went through all that information from, from that safety standpoint. But really reaching out, you know, there's something that I overlooked as your councilman, as your representative. You know, I, I started having a lot of these very obtuse conversations, right, with our, with my constituents. And what I mean by that is, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's an ideology change, right? It's, it's, it's a change that many people that I've talked to, you know, you pay taxes, right? You pay taxes and you have certain things that you pay taxes for that you count on, right? It's, it's if you want a police car there, if you want an ambulance there, if you want a fire truck there. And so, so that's something that I missed as, as a representative, and I know that my big learning from all this process is that I really need to be out there more. So I'm looking to do town halls starting next month with my community to tell them about some of the issues that are happening on city council, because there are a lot of big issues coming. And if we don't talk about them, if we don't, you know, this was very good tonight to, to bring this out in the open, because I think that, I think that we can get, we have so many smart people around, right? I mean, I learned a lot about EMS. I don't know a ton about EMS, but I've learned a lot in the last three weeks. I think we can reach out to those people and figure this out, right? It has to change. And that's what I've been explaining to everybody that I've talked to, is it, from my constituents, is it's, it's, you know, at the end of the day, we have to decide, or we have to, we have to change what we're doing because what we're doing isn't going to be built for the future. So, let's figure that out. I'm all in favor for, for Randy's motion, but I, I just hope that we see a task force. I just hope that we see the chiefs of police, chiefs of fire, chiefs of EMS coming together, coalescing community. And again, like I said, I babble, so.
Anybody else?
No, I think everybody knows what the consequences are of the vote, so.
Is, okay, so Randy, would you repeat your, your motion?
I move that, I move that, we, or did you write it down, Jen, or no?
I have discontinue, I didn't write, discontinuing the contract at this point, starting over and finding the best path. I summarized, but you need to keep on going.
We'll move to end the contract with Lakeview completely. And then move, and then go into, whether it's an ad hoc committee or some kind of commission to come to some kind of direction to find a model, whether it's a study, a model to look at our finance options, to make it sustainable, move forward.
So develop an ad hoc committee?
Is that, is that similar to what?
Yeah. I, I think our goal here is to make St. Croix EMS successful going forward. I, I, you know, I did second your motion. I think at the end of the day, when, when you set your mind to finishing a goal and making it successful, then we all work towards that rather than having an opportunity on the table to sell something. We kind of tend to focus on that. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but when everyone puts their brain power into saving and focusing on a goal, I think then we're going to get real results from, man, all kinds of people we've heard from tonight. So, that, yeah.
Am I still on the same track with the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good?
I just want to wait, say one more thing, that in this process, Lakeview has been unfairly maligned in the services it delivers through many communities in Minnesota and Wisconsin. People may not have wanted Lakeview to be involved in this process, but we have to remember going forward that St. Croix EMS and Lakeview have worked together for many years. And that partnership can't be allowed to be destroyed because of this vote. And I don't want people to leave here tonight because it's apparent how the vote's going to go, with the idea that Lakeview does not provide excellent service because it does. And it would have provided excellent service in Hudson, I am convinced. But my colleagues on the council don't see it that way, so that's where we're at.
Okay, further discussion? All of us in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is approved. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, public hearing on proposed amendment to the City of Hudson Municipal Code, Section 255-48, off-street parking requirements, If you could please exit quietly so we try to get the rest of this meeting done, I'd appreciate it. Thank you all. Sub 3, sub S regarding the B3 Central Business District, Section 255-48H, sub 3, sub S regarding language for exemption, Section 255-48H, sub 3, sub S.
Oh, no, nevermind.
Of 1, sub E.
Are you going to comment on the public hearing? No, never mind. Sorry, dude.
B schedule regarding the first all fee and to create, Section 255-48H, sub 3, sub T regarding the B4 Central Business District. So, is there anybody here left that would like to comment on the public hearing on this Any speakers? Any speakers? Any speakers? Entertain a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing on proposed amendment to the City of Hudson Municipal Code, Section 255-14.h to create a B4 Central Business District and amend Section 255-24 permitted uses, Section 255-25 dimensional requirements, and Section 255-48 off-street parking requirements. Is there anybody here that would like to comment in the public hearing? Any comment? Any comment? Any comment? Entertain a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Comments and suggestions from citizens? Seriously?
I believe we got some people that say something.
Comments from citizens? Anybody?
On anything?
On anything. Anything that's not on the agenda.
Really, Roy?
Two seconds. Perhaps a lot of what went on tonight could have been avoided had you allowed the citizens to speak on items that are on the agenda. I know the St. Croix County used to have a rule just like yours, that if it's on the agenda, sorry, it's, you can't come in, contact, comment about that unless you're recognized by the chair. And then we switched. And now the, when the issue is coming up, just like you did tonight, vote on the issue of the public, right after the public hearing, and the cameras came in, and that's how I think our city should respond. When people are interested, I remember, they were all here, Channel 9 was here, and then it was because it was listed on the agenda, we're, we're trying to get an idea out in the public about what's going on in Hudson. One of the greatest ways of doing that is through the TV channels. So Channel 9 came out and they, you saw them pack up their camera and go home because no one, all the people here couldn't comment on that. I'd just like you to reexamine that process and perhaps reconsider in allowing people to speak on agenda items during the time period for open comment. I know you'll have more long meetings, but maybe that's the price we pay. I know you'll have more long meetings, but maybe that's the price we pay for democracy here. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Anybody? Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Close that part of the agenda. Discussion of possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve from, the minutes from the regular session meeting of June 5, 2017, to approve claims in the amount of $428,772.09. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check, approve the issuance of 22 regular operator licenses unfiled within the clerk's office for the period of June 20, 2017, to June 30, 2019. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check, approve the issuance of seven temporary operator licenses for Hudson Booster Days for the dates of Friday, June 30 to Sunday, July 2, 2017, to Darlene Hune, Michael Babolt, Scott Cameron, David Hune, Brian Mars, Jerry McKenzie, and Tracy Jenkinson. To approve amusement device owner's license to Mendota Valley Amusement and the Four Games contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and completion of the background check. To place and file the Public Utility Commission meeting minutes of May 9, 2017, and June 13, 2017. To place and file the EMS Commission meeting minutes of June 2, 2017. To approve Riverfest on July 18 through July 23, 2017, at Lakefront Park. To approve the plans specification for the advertisement for the 2017 street maintenance project. To approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for the 2017 storm sewer repair project. To approve the final development plans proposed for Value View Center, 805 Dominion Drive, BNA Properties LLC, with the following conditions: that the site improvement will adhere to the approved development review and construction processes within the city; that further staff review of traffic impact occur as tenants' owners begin occupying the development; to approve the final master sign plan as proposed for Value View Center, 805 Dominion Drive, BNA Properties LLC, with the following conditions: that the site improvement will adhere to the approved development review and construction processes within the city; that the freestanding sign be no more than 45 feet in height above the first floor elevation of the nearest building in the development; that the freestanding sign be placed at least 25 feet of any intersection or right, street right-of-way of lines and/or driveway entrance, or have a minimum vertical distance of 10 feet above the center line of pavement; that the location of the sign, location, the sign location, including distance from street right-of-way and/or central line, be shown on the final development plans; to approve the letter engagement with Frye Burger Law Firm for development council.
I'd like to pull that.
Pull that?
Please.
To approve Wagner Relay Foot Brace between August 18, 2017, at 7:00 PM, to August 19, 2017, at 5:00 AM. To approve helping hands through HIVA on Saturday, September 30, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Lakefront Park. To approve Gopher to Badger Foot Race, beginning and ending on Lakefront Park on August 12, 2017. And to approve St. Pat's Fall Fest 5K Fun Run Walk on Saturday, September 16, 2017, at 9:00 AM, beginning and ending at St. Patrick's Church.
Do we have a motion?
Both, so both.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item M.
Oh, second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Roll call.
Morse, that?
Yes.
Umms?
Yes.
Cormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
On Item M, which is the designation of a law firm for council, at development council in connection with the proposed St. Croix Metals Redevelopment Project at 533, we all got a letter, a email from Eckberg and Landers, Nick Vivian, asking that they be considered for that position. And I'm just, so I thought, well, I always prefer to do business local, but I don't know if there's, I don't know the background of the selection of this council.
If I may, yeah, that was a direction that was given to staff by Ellers, our council, as it pertains to setting up the establishment of the Tiff District Number 5. Quite frankly, I asked them, you know, who are you most comfortable with using? I trust the services that Ellers provides, the city. Not to say that we're not open, or that I'm not open to, obviously, different firms. I, I think that's, that's okay. But this is moving relatively quickly, and I wanted to make sure that whoever we engaged with, that Ellers was very comfortable with that firm.
So do you have a recommendation, Mike?
You, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with, with Bob Tofti and Frye Burger. That'd be my recommendation, understanding that that's what Ellers recommended to me. And I'm very comfortable with, with our relationship with Sean and Ellers, so.
What's your pleasure?
Why don't we hear what the local firm has to offer? If they want to make a proposal?
Sure, we can do that.
Do we have, do you have time?
Yeah, I think we have time. I think Catherine and I, in the meantime, can, we'll be okay.
When do they, when do they start to engage, Mike?
I would imagine, well, the public hearing with Plan Commission, and we'll have the Joint Review Board tomorrow, and then Plan Commission.
But they, when would, when would we need to be engaged with an attorney?
Shortly thereafter, if that vote moved forward.
So what's the process, then? If you, if you have time, we would, we would need to take it up at the earliest July?
Yeah, July 3 was when.
Is that enough time?
That's, yeah, I think that's enough time.
And what's your process, then? What do you, how are you going to do this?
I'll reach out to the individual that emailed us this evening.
And then come back with a recommendation?
And come back with, come back with what their terms would be.
Can you, Mike, can you get one more thing? Some, something that shows their experience doing this work, some?
Sure.
The, the stuff they've worked on.
Absolutely.
So what, what's the pleasure of the council, then, to ask Mike to consider the, the two attorneys and then come back with a recommendation again, or?
Yeah.
Well, why can't we get the information before we have to do something?
I would imagine we could, but.
Yeah, why don't we just postpone it till the next meeting with more information? That's what you're saying, right?
So if we're?
We can just not take action. Up against.
No, but I'm, so everybody's okay with voting on this on the 3rd?
Does that work for the timeline? Yeah.
Okay. All right. So does that require a motion, or?
Yeah, I think you should have a motion.
I'll move to delay the decision till Ju, July 3, excuse me.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on adoption of ordinance 9-17, elected official compensation.
Move for second reading.
Which would be approval of the ordinance. First reading at the last.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion?
Who seconded it? I didn't hear it. Thank you.
No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. New business, discussion and possible action on ordinance 10-17, amending Section 255-48, off-street parking requirements, Section 255-48H, Sub 3, Sub S regarding the B3 Central Business District, Section 255-48H, 3, Sub 3, Sub S regarding language for exemption, Section 255-48H, Sub 3, Sub S, Sub 1, Sub E, fee schedule regarding the per stall fee and to create Section 255-48H, Sub 3, Sub T regarding the B4 Central Business District.
Awesome.
Can you explain that?
I've been working on that for a while.
So this was an outcome of the parking analysis that was recently completed earlier this year. Part of that was the city should, requested that we take a look at what our payment in lieu of parking rate was, and it sounds like that this discussion took place at Plan Commission and Council a number of years ago. At that time, the rate was set at $2,500, which it is currently. Rich associates essentially said, hey, that's not going to cover the development of new parking moving forward. If a developer were to come in and not be able to provide adequate parking on-site downtown, that's when they pay this fee. So Plan Commission, we deliberated on this item for quite some time. I think it was even the meeting before that I, before I came on board. So the recommendation from Plan Commission is to move forward with raising the stall fee to $8,500 and to add the definition for new construction. Questions?
At 25, at the previous time we discussed the 25, what we didn't want to do was hinder the desire for growth. And 2,500, I'm not saying it's still the valid number, but boy, it really starts to get pretty intense when you have a lot of square feet, 6, 8, 10,000, it gets pretty spendy if you don't have an extra building, so. Any reason you guys picked 8,500 from 2,500?
Some of the thought from Plan Commission and was that some of the businesses that are here now paved the way, and that now we're so tight on parking as it is, that there's got to be a way to provide it, and there's got to be a way to pay for it, and it can't just all be on the city or all be on the business. We have to.
We're still below what they pointed out in the study, and a lot of it was that we don't have much more land downtown.
Okay, scarce.
I think it was half, wasn't it? Didn't we, didn't we meet them in the?
You went higher, but half from the, okay.
Correct.
I didn't get a chance to read the notes in that. Okay.
As I remember, the, the parking spaces we created on First Street, figured out, cost about $2,500 each, and that was a really simple project. So we were, at that point, we were vastly under charging for creation of parking. So this starts to approach the number.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the recommendations on the Plan Commissions.
You're adopting this ordinance, right?
Is it an ordinance? Yeah, okay, move to suspend the rules. Second.
Okay, got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Morse?
Yes.
Umms? Cormick? Weber?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Move to approve ordinance 10-17. Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on ordinance 11-17, amending Section 255-14H to create a B4 Central District, Central Business District and amend Section 255-24 permitted uses, Section 255-25 dimensional requirements, and Section 255-48 off-street parking requirements.
I'd request that the council postpone action on this item, so that City Attorney and I can have a little bit more time to discuss some of the concerns regarding some lack of information in that draft ordinance.
There's, the situation is it's unusual, there's no permitted uses in the B4 district, and I didn't have time to look into it today, but I think there's some case law out there that addresses other ordinances. For example, St. Croix County had an ordinance where it had no permitted uses in its commercial district, only special exception permits. And I just think there may be some legal issue with that, and I wanted to look into that, because that's what this B4 does. There's no identification of permitted uses. Any use in that district is conditional use. So it's somewhat like spot zoning. I'm not saying it's prohibited, but I just, fairly certain there's case law out there on there, and I just want to make sure of that before you move forward with it.
All right, any problem with that?
Move to postpone till July 3 meeting. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fine.
Easy, yeah.
Second. Second.
Got a motion, second to postpone till July 3. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on drafting an ordinance to allow goats within the city limits.
This came out of public safety and was unanimously sent up to us to have City Attorney draft some kind of ordinance with that.
To be clear, this is not to raise and harbor goats, this is to allow goats to eat vegetation.
There's a term, it's called munching, and what they do is they eat invasive species of plant life.
Sorry, 20.
And there are some, I think St. Paul, there's some draft ordinances. There really isn't one in the state of Wisconsin, from what I understand.
Their ordinance is, is it coming from St. Paul, you say?
That's the only one we could find that's this close. There's none.
We want to use these goats in our parks, too, because they do a really great job. They just, they fence them in and they eat invasives, and it's, no chemicals are used, and it, it's very successful. It works.
I've heard about it.
Yeah, particularly buckthorn.
I saw, I saw on the.
I don't know if you want to hear from Roy again, but he.
If we vote on it, can we not?
But he might know a little more information, since it was his house that had these goats, unbeknownst to everybody. Munching.
You feeling compelled?
I saw a, a picture, an article, of the goats being used in the state of Washington on underpasses, around underpasses, where they couldn't mow, and they just fence them off and put the goats in there, they eat the stuff down and gone.
Public safety asks a few questions about, what if they get loose, the smell, the noise, et cetera, et cetera. So there are some, there are ways that they control that, so.
60 seconds.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the drafting an ordinance to allow goats within the city limits.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second.
Thank you. Roy Shoberg again, 1108 Vine Street, the person that had the goats. I'm probably needing to defend my wife more than myself, because she's the one that's written up in the O'Clare Newsletter about farm country. And so I heard about this from Corporation Counsel just today. He said he was reading about the Paul Simon concert, and then he read about my wife's renting goats. So I also looked, just a couple bits of new information that I didn't make available at the last public protection meeting, or public safety. Wisconsin DNR has a list of those herders and farmers that are available, and they talk about that these are available throughout the state for, for use by cities and by individuals. I also, when I talked to the farmer, I said, are there any other complaints ever heard against you? And they said, no, nope, this is the first one. And then finally, just to, for some, maybe some legal advice for our city attorney, three ways of going about this. One is for you to come up with an opinion that the current ordinance does not prohibit the use of goats in this matter, because you could just determine that harboring is not what's going on. And so the ordinance that we're affecting or running into is not applicable. So you could just deal with it that way. Secondly, is we could have the farmer herder be licensed, much like a contractor, have it done once, meet with your background check and, and whatever you need to have, and then that's approved. And I doubt it, there's going to be lots and lots of farmers bringing goats to you, so it'd be one or two licenses, perhaps. And the third, the most extensive one, would be the permitting process. The, the one advantage of the permitting process would be if there are goats running down Second Street, you'd know which party was renting them for that week. So there's that. But I'll leave it up to council to figure out what to do.
Okay, thanks, Roy. We got a motion, second, discussion?
The Park Board was very interested in this process as well, that they thought it was a good idea to use it in the parks.
Okay. Other discussion?
Well, Roy, you mentioned there's information. Okay, has that been provided, or is it going to be provided? You don't need to do it now, just send an email or something, so we know what we're talking about. Voting on.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just abstaining, because I don't have enough information on it.
Item D, strike it. E, discussion of possible action on adoption of resolution number 13-17, compliance maintenance annual report.
Go ahead and read this, sorry. Compliance maintenance annual report.
I present this this evening, you have the resolution in front of you with the report that we're proposing to send in regard to the compliance ma- the report that we're proposing to send in regard to the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. And they scored an A because of the hard work and effort at the wastewater treatment plan.
Okay? No action?
Yeah, need to...
Oh, need to adopt?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Morse, Alms, Cormick, Weber, Hoggit, Paul.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended. Your motion?
Move to approve Resolution Number 13-17.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
I'd like to make a comment on this. This is really a top grade for this, and people who work with sewage all day don't often get very many compliments. And the Public Utilities Commission also, it's in the meeting minutes that we would like to see a commendation from the City Council to these people for having such an excellent score on this.
Sure, awesome.
Great idea.
Okay, got that noted. Communication recommendations by Mayor, I've got nothing for tonight, other than to compliment everybody on hanging in there for a year on EMS.
It's a long time.
Anything else? You guys got anything?
I have two items. One is I used Agenda Free, Jen's new app. I don't know if anybody else did.
Yeah, it's up right now.
I love it.
Yeah, it's great.
Google's gone.
Yeah. I don't bet on that.
My computer doesn't like Google, anyway. But I'd also like to recommend that we revisit the citizen comments portion. I had the oppor, I've had the opportunity to attend several county meetings this last year, and that process seems to work. You know, that it doesn't, it's never gotten out of hand, the meetings I was at, and I'm sure it can, but I think it's a good idea to allow a little more opportunity and see how that goes. I don't know how we have to revisit that, where that, where that restriction or direction lies, what...
It's not mine. I'm not claiming any ownership of that.
Yeah, it's totally within the council's purview to establish policy.
Yeah, I'd like to see that on the agenda as well. I think we should be encouraging public comments and, instead of discouraging them from participating.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanna look into whether we can regulate the use of drones in Hudson.
Wow.
Flying over people's property and photographing. There's a, there's a, I think there's, I think there's, I think there's a statute, there's a statute that's under consideration at the legislature.
Legislature?
Yeah.
Interesting.
And I just wanted to know if we can do anything at a municipal level.
I don't know, but I would...
And I don't know, the FCC requires that you now register your drone, so I don't know if they have extra rules regarding that or not.
You actually need a pilot's license, or it's not a fully pilot's license. But I know that, like, the river out here is technically within, I think Lake Galmo's the airport or something like that, and it's within that boundary where you can't technically fly there. But other parts, you know, you can't be that close to the hospital because of helicopters.
Our schools?
Schools, I don't think are, but it'd be worth looking into from a permitting standpoint to...
See a lot of drones out there.
...allowing people to do it, but they have to pay a fee.
All right, anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Hurry.
Jake.
Got a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned, thanks, everybody.